I know. Keeping with tradition.
Welcome and good morning to the Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors meeting. It's August 26, 2025, and it's just a little past, well, we'll call it five minutes past nine o'clock. If you would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation given by Pastor Rod Cochran from the Christian Love Baptist Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Let us pray. Lord, we gather this morning in service to the people of Stanislaus County with gratitude for the opportunity to lead, to listen, and to shape a future rooted in integrity, compassion, and justice. Lord, may wisdom guide our decisions and may humility temper our words. Let us remember that behind every policy and every vote, there are lives of our neighbors, families, communities who trust us to act with fairness and foresight. Lord, may we honor the diversity of our voices that make this county vibrant, and may we seek unity without demanding uniformity. In moments of disagreement, may we find respect. In moments of uncertainty, may we find courage. Lord, let this session be marked by clarity, purpose, and a shared commitment to the common good for the people of this county. In Jesus' name we pray.
Thank you, Pastor, for that prayer. Moving on to public comment. Public comment is a time for those in attendance to speak on items not already on today's agenda. Please state your name for the record, direct all comments towards the dais, and so does fair for every speaker. Keep comments to the five-minute time limit. I have one card. Brian Evett.
Good morning, Supervisors. Brian Evett. Anyway, there's just a few things that I'd like to make statements on because we're trying to catch up from the year we had Christians for sheriff, and we had quite a few losses in suits. I think they came up to around $51 million because our sheriffs always been looking for money this time, our new sheriff, Dircksey, to try to improve things. So the way I look at it is he does need the help. We do need the technology, but we also need the ability that the sheriff stand up for the rights of the citizens. That means their civil rights, the protection of these citizens. When we intake a prisoner from a city police officer that makes allegations against them, then our sheriff should turn around and investigate each one of these reports before they take him in because this is going to cost the county money for these false allegations. And we wind up with the individual police stations or police turn around, and they turn around and send us that. So we become liable, otherwise the sheriff will become liable when he takes them in. Now, to stop these suits and stop this overspending of all this money that goes to these suits, we need to make sure that we're bringing in people that have actually broken the law because otherwise we're just putting ourselves in a situation to be sued again, and then we'll have no more money. And eventually, if we run out of money for the sheriff's department, we have no protection because the protection comes from that sheriff. And that sheriff is supposed to protect us even from our own court systems, which are our judges, but it seems to have been lost. Now, I don't know why it's been lost, but there's civil rights and constitutional rights that need to be protected, and the people need to be protected on this situation. And we need to protect ourselves in the money that we spent. I mean, at $51 million, plus we lost a helicopter. That was another $4 million. Now, why should we lose this? The helicopter says, "Return at this time. You're running out of fuel." They don't listen. The same thing. It becomes a clown. We turn around, we place a deputy in a courtroom, and we have a crooked judge to turn around and try to protect the county instead of its people. We don't want that. We want the people protected, and that's what we got to do. So to protect the people, we have to protect ourselves. So let's bring back that law and order that we used to have. Let's have the sheriff stand up. Let's give them the money, but give them some training to understand what their job is, to protect the people from false allegations, from danger from our own within, because they say we will die from within if we don't do what the right thing is. So let's do the right things. Let's try to change this and make it for betterment. That's all I could say. I'd like to express that, and I hope you guys can understand that. And I appreciate the time. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Evett. That's the only public speaking card that I had. Are there any other public that'd like to make a comment? Emerson, come on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron McMurtry here. Coincidences are really something. Mr. Evett's comment actually relates to my case, so I find that very interesting, and I do intend to give a little report about the sheriff's department, my experience with it, in a future date. That's not for today. My question today pertains particularly, I think, to the responsibilities of Councilor Bowes. A peculiar thing happened at a public hearing that we had a few weeks ago, and I know speak public only are allowed to speak one time during public comment and so on, and that makes sense because you don't want people coming back and whining. But what happened, I don't even remember what the subject was. Oh, it was the commissioner, the agriculture commissioner, the committee they were trying to form. What happened in that one, and as I spoke my piece, but then the supervisors went on and kind of went on in an interesting tangent, and I had something positive to contribute at that point, but I had already spoken. And so I'd like to request that when the public part of the meeting is closed and new topics are brought up, that Councilor LeBeau's maybe, you know, reopen the meeting for, you know, comments on the tangent. I know the last thing you want is any loose cannons coming up here to speak, but, you know, I'm just saying, I have constructive things and, you know, a missed opportunity. So just a small thing there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Emerson, you were coming up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Emerson Drake, longtime Modesto resident. You know, I've got two topics tonight. The first one is quite personal, I guess. A couple of weeks ago, I was trying to help out a longtime family friend. She lives in the county, so I wasn't familiar with all the ins and outs, so I called the CEO's office. Unfortunately, after being sent down to a very dead ends, I did what I should have done in the first place. I called Supervisor Whitrow's office. Jennifer, is that her name? I don't, okay. The lady took the ball, ran with it, better than any halfback I've ever seen, I have to be honest. Now, I can't swear it's going to be a perfect outcome for my, our family friend, but things are looking much better for her. And so I do appreciate that, and that woman's a, she, it makes magic, that's all I can say. Now, the second issue is a bigger concern, or as big a concern. You know, we've seen a lot going on between the issues with Stan Cog, and I'm not here to beat a dead horse, or a dying one, anyway, however you want to say it. But it's over, it's part of the overall concern that I have, and I would, I would hope that we would use Stan Cog as an opportunity to bring things, or pull the reins back. I need, we need you to take a closer, I don't want to say interest because I know you're interested, but you have to stop allowing everybody to feed you garbage, quite honestly. You know, those issues should have been cropped up by the people on that committee for a long time. You know, the sad part is some of the people that voted for the $25,000 a month are the same people that were responsible for the issue in the first place. I think anybody that gets caught with their hand in the cookie jar should be banned from that board for life, whether they're a mayor or a city council person. It just makes sense. If you're going to participate in that and not speak out, the sheriff would be able to arrest you, quite honestly. Not that issue, but it's called an accessory, you know? When you allow it to go on and you expect it to be solved, that's a big issue. Now, I turn around and I look at some of the negotiations we have going on with the SEIU. You know, I'm not trying to get too overly involved there, but quite honestly, there's some big concerns. My relatives in North Carolina, who I think they give a genealogy test just to get out, would like to call it a nepotism once removed. You know, they're always good at, you know, second cousins once, it's amazing how they keep track of that. But it seems to me we might have some of that going on here, and that's a concern. When I look at your negotiating staff, the prime, when the first one is obviously nepotism once removed, the second one is special interest nepotism once removed. I think you deserve a better negotiating group. You know, the, one of, I'm trying to avoid rattling the names. I'm, you know, I'm not against that, but they're not elected, so I try to let it slide. You're there responsible for it. But the comments are always arrogant and disrespectful. Now, I don't believe that you intend or have ever intended to negotiate that way. I understand union negotiations can be hardball, but there's no reason to kick up dust in somebody's face. There's no reason to sit there and amuse yourself on your laptop and not pay attention to what's going on. And for you, there's no reason to field people that are just basically warming a chair and never, never throw anything out. Now, if that's your intent for your representative to be disrespectful and for your representative in these negotiations to be arrogant, and I'm not talking about the CEO, don't misunderstand me. It's the people that we bring in. I don't understand why we don't expand just a little bit. You know, it comes to that line, "This is just a little Peyton Place." Now, I'm not going to compare us to the old, that old story, but the point is, we've got a lot of talent out there. They don't always have to be connected to special interest groups, the Energizer Bunny, if you will, from Modesto, and they don't have to be connected to former employees of the Board of Supervisors. It's just not right, or Stanislaus County, however you want to say it. I want you to step up and take a closer look. I want you to get even more involved. Make sure that people that are handling your issues are the ones you, and not somebody else, really want to have handling those issues. You need to make sure that the people that are negotiating for you and allegedly in good faith are doing that, and those are the people that you really want to have there because from what I've seen, that's just not the case. And I trust you. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Emerson. Any others that would like to make public comment on items not on the agenda? I'm seeing none. I'm going to close public comment and move on to consent calendar. And before the board takes action on the consent calendar, does anyone in the audience wish to provide public comment on any matter on the consent calendar? I see a none. I've had a request to pull C1. Supervisor Chance Condit and...
I'm going to recuse myself from C1 because I didn't receive the contribution from George Reed.
So let's, I'll...
We have to go ahead. C1, that's the one you're going to, recuse yourself.
We're going to do the rest of the consent calendar first, and then we'll go back. Okay. And I'll...
Wait. We're going to do the rest of the calendar and then come to C1.
So I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, all except for C1.
Sir. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. Okay, C1.
Good morning. We're pretty excited about this. The neighborhood right across the road from the Public Works yard, we share a neighborhood with them, and we should be out to construction first week of October. Takes a few weeks to review insurance, get contracts back and forth and signed. George Reed is excited about this project. Construction Engineering and Public Works is excited about this project, and I'm available for any other questions.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. I really appreciate it, and that's exciting news. This is obviously a monumental moment for the community of South Modesto, specifically for the community of Park Lawn, and we applaud the efforts that are being made by your department, and this has been a long haul, a long time coming. But again, we are anxiously anticipating the completion in 2026. And the reason why I pulled this item is just to make sure that we're on track, that you have the resources and tools you need to proceed forward in an efficient manner. And also just keeping in mind that this is one of the rare, I guess, county islands, if you will, that is going to hopefully be 100% done. That is our anticipation. Those are the draw, the maps that I've seen is that this community is going to be 100% completion. I just want to, again, urge you to be engaging with LAFCO because we know how strenuous that process is and how tolling that is just as far as time. So if we could just be engaging with LAFCO and kind of gearing that up, teeing it up, if you will, so that we can have a seamless transition in engaging the city of Modesto and our city partners to get that annex because that is our ultimate goal. But again, thank you for all your hard work, but we're looking forward to October and then the completion in 2026.
We do anticipate some kind of groundbreaking out there, so we are coordinating that. So we'll do something there, out there in, is it Olympic Park? I think it might be. So the park right out there in Park Lawn. So we'll do something out there and do a groundbreaking once a contractor gets mobilized, so it should be a lot of fun.
And just to clarify, because my colleague did, I mean, he pointed out, as we all know, that is adjacent to the city of Series. I mean, we would be engaging potentially the city of Modesto, however, for annexation. Is that correct, or at least as of today?
Right. The, that industrial cul-de-sac just to the south of us is in the city of Modesto. The west side of Morgan there is in the city sphere, all the way down to Whitmore. And so city of Modesto, not city of Series. So south of us, of a courtyard, is Series, but I think we're in Modesto's sphere, too, actually.
Yeah. Okay. Well, great. Well, we look forward to that groundbreaking in October, and just please keep me abreast of any future developments.
Absolutely. We'll be working with your office to coordinate and schedule the groundbreaking.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any public comment on C1? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a first.
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous. All right, we can bring Terry back. All right, moving on to discussion items. Acceptance of the fiscal year 2025 American Rescue Plan Act, state and local fiscal recovery fund, annual report, chief executive office, and Helica Ramos.
And I'll go ahead and get us started just to, while the staff are setting up the presentation here. And good morning. For those of you not familiar with this process, the Board of Supervisors have dedicated a significant amount of ARPA funds to make investments throughout the community, and as part of, I think, one of the contingencies on the board's approval was to ensure that we had a very transparent reporting process on how those investments were paying off over time. So if you monitor our board agendas, you'll see that every quarter, each component of our investment strategy reports out on what's happening in that particular quarter. And then, once per year, we do like to do a presentation where we kind of give you an overall annual assessment and also share some of the latest information. I'm very, very pleased to see this morning that we've invited in many of the partners. So some of the folks you might be used to hearing from as it relates to these strategies, but this morning we have many of our partners in the room, and I know several of them are also going to speak on how these funds have been put to good use here in the community. So very excited for today's presentation. There are actually four components to this presentation, and Helica and Anthony will provide the very first section, which is just a brief overview of the annual report that is due to the federal government. And then after that, we're going to do a deep dive in separate agenda items on the various investments. So thank you all for being here. Appreciate it.
Good morning, members of the dais. I'm Helica Ramos, Deputy Executive Officer in the Chief Executive Office, and as Jody mentioned, we'll just be doing a quick intro. The meat and potatoes of the presentations around ARPA will really be our partners as they come up and present, as they have been doing quarterly. So with me is Anthony Tobias. He is our in-house expert over overseeing all of the fiscal reporting and tracking for ARPA, and he's going to help me with the presentation. So just a series of reminders. The first one being, Stanislaus County received $107 million for, for the American Rescue Plan Act, from the American Rescue Plan Act, to respond to the impacts of the COVID pandemic. This board approved a spending plan for those dollars back in March, on March 28, 2023. The categories are shown on your screen. There was a $30 million set aside for economic development and job creation. There was $5 million to create a community development corporation. $5.2 million were set aside for programs to support families and individuals' access COVID-related assistance. $55.8 million went to community infrastructure. We recognized a $10 million standard allowance allowed through the American Rescue Plan Act and safeguarded it for future budget balancing, and we set aside $1 million for administrative On your screen, the pie chart shows what we have reported to Treasury as expended through June of 2025. Through June of 2025, among all of the partners, we've expended $38.3 million, over $107 million. And the spending is really, there's been a lot of planning that went in on the front end. The spending is really occurring here towards the end of the period for the funds. Required from Treasury for ARPA is that we submit an annual performance report, and we wanted to make sure that you knew and that members of the public knew that that report is available, along with all of the other ones, on the website that is listed on the screen. It is on our Stanislaus County website in the Auditor's Office Financial Reports section. And another reminder of our plan for Board of Supervisors reporting, periodic reporting on these funds. Representatives from the lead agencies, as we mentioned, will be coming, coming to present quarterly around benefits navigation services, around the job creation and economic development activities, and the urban pockets and communities infrastructure activities. The plan has been and will continue to be through the end of the period that they come, we're targeting November, February, May, and August for those reports, and we come in August just to do the, just to alert you and the members of the public on the annual report. And updates will run through the end of the performance period. That is December 31, 2026, and we expect to deliver our final report to this board in February of 2027. With that, I would ask that the board members accept the report, the ARPA report for fiscal year 2025. We're open to any questions, and again, our partners will be out to answer any of the detailed questions that may arise.
Thank you, Helica. Any questions for him? Any public comment? I'll bring it back to the board for the acceptance. I have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, moving on. Acceptance of the fiscal year 2025 Annual Report on Stanislaus County Investment of the American Rescue Plan Act Funding for the Provision of Navigation and Case Management Services. Christine Huber and Ed Seller, am I pronouncing that right?
Good morning.
Morning.
Chairman Condit, members of the board, CEO Hayes, County Council, Bowes. My name is Ed Quayarm from the Community Services Agency. I'm the Associate Director of the Standworks Division. And with me, we have Lenny Campos, Senior Program Manager with the Standworks Division. So we're here to present to you the fiscal outcome for the fiscal year 2025 for our navigation and case management services. So just a brief history. Back in 2021, we went out with an RFP to try to get partners with us that would be willing to go into part of this contractual agreement with trying to provide navigation and case management services to our community. And with that, we had a total of $5 million that was allocated to this project. As you can see, the first contract period, what, $2.5 million ran from February of 2022 and ended in June 30 of 2023. And the second contract period, which we're currently in, is running through June 30 of 2026. As you can see, the awards barrier, the area, just to give a brief history, the areas that we decided where the dollars would go. We did an analysis as to the members of the community that utilized services throughout our community, and that's how we came up with the dollar figures that you see there. So really quickly, what we attempted to do with this service was to do two items, right, for us. It was actually to provide navigation services to those members of the community to familiarize themselves with the resources that were available in our community. During COVID, that was a tough time. There wasn't a lot of people walking around trying to seek services. In this particular instance, the navigation process was designed to not only familiarize our community with the resources that are within the community, but also to expand the possibilities of what other resources were available to assist our family members. Case management came along with it. Depending on the service that was requested, a lot of our community-based organizations had in-house services, so that would assist some of our families. And again, also reaching out to other community-based organizations to see what other resources they could provide to our community. Some of our items that we were seeking were barrier removal items, which is still a constant need in our community, and some of the recovery support services that we were trying to target were, are listed there, but the main ones were really housing stability that we seen. Food insecurity seems to be a large item for us. We had early childhood development to help families try to navigate the school process for their young ones. Behavioral health services and substance abuse disorder services were another big items that we were trying to target. And of course, with early on during the outcomes of COVID, as we were coming out of it, employment assistance and access to any other public assistance services that may be available. So those are just some of the items that we were focusing on with this contract. So out of the RFP, we came across four community-based organizations. West Modesto Community Collaborative, Esperanet, Center for Human Services, and Sierra Vista are our partners in this endeavor. So expenditures, so far, we've spent quite a bit. So actually, I'm proud to say that actually West Modesto has actually terminated or ended their funds already, so they've exhausted their funds for this contract year. And as you can see, Esperanet is around like $81,000 remaining, and we're expecting them to expend their contract sometime early this, later this year. And then the other two, Sierra Vista and Center for Human Services, are on track to expend their funds by the end of June 30. Okay, so the chart that you have for you is, these are unique numbers. So when I say that unique numbers is that people seeking services could also seek, may have multiple requests for service items for one individual, for example. But these are all the unique numbers of people regardless of how many services they requested. As you can see, for the fiscal year of 2025, 4,151 unique individuals have requested services throughout our community, largest areas being North Modesto and the West Modesto area seems to be our highest concentration for folks seeking services. Next chart you'll see for you is the actual number of services that have been requested by our community members. Total of 5,077 members have sought services throughout our community. As you can see, the largest, the two largest areas are food insecurity or food stability and also housing stability. I will tell you that over the course of this contractual period, those have always been the largest areas of need for our members of our community. One of the things that we've seen recently, especially with a lot of the housing crisis that we have and then the cost of inflation, we have seen those numbers continually creep up in our community. So I'd like to present to you a short video with one of our, from one of our partners, West Modesto Community Collaborative, with a item, with a customer that they served using some of the funds that we have before you.
Can you tell us a little bit about yourself and your life before you found the navigation program? What challenges were you facing at that time?
My name is Angela. I'm a Uber driver. I got sick. I was out of work for three months. I couldn't pay my bills, and I didn't know what I was going to do. I tried everything that I could think of, and I didn't have the help that I needed. I didn't, I couldn't figure out what to do. I didn't, I couldn't figure out what to do. It just, it was hard. It was very hard. And so I just continued to try to find out what kind of help I could get. And so here I am now.
What kind of help did you receive from the program?
I was told that I could get help. I filled out an application, and I was allowed to, I was able to pay my MID bill, which helped a whole lot because I was overdue with having to pay that. And I got help with getting some gas and some groceries, and because I was low, I hardly had any groceries and stuff, and trying to drive without gas was hard. And when I got the money for the gas, the car, I was able to put gas in my car and start driving, and that helped me a lot.
Can you share a specific moment when you felt the program really made a difference to you?
When I received everything that I needed, the gas card, the cards for the groceries, being able to get everything that I needed taken care of. And when I was able to pay the bill for MID, that helped me a lot. That was amazing. And I didn't even know such a program existed. So I was very, very grateful for that opportunity to be able to do it. So I'm grateful for that.
How is your life different today compared to before you got the help?
I started driving again, and I was able to, like I said, I got the groceries, I got the gas, and I started driving. And after that, everything turned around, it changed, and I was able to start doing what I had to do with driving because that was my livelihood. I had to be able to drive.
If this program didn't exist, what do you think kind of happened?
Oh my gosh, it would have been a bigger mess than it was already in. And I was not wanting to have to depend on anyone, but I needed some help. I got some help from Kate with Lily. She helped me.
Why is it important that the county continues to fund programs like the navigation?
Because there are a lot of people like me out there that need help. I've talked to people who struggle, and it's hard when you can't get the help you need. And I know, I share people, and I tell them that there's opportunities to be able to get the help that you need.
If you could describe this program in one word, what would it be and why?
It's, it's an amazing program, and I will be, I'll forever be grateful for the help that I received. And I believe that people need to find out that this program is wonderful, it's helpful, and it's a program that will change people's lives if they're given the chance to receive the help that they need.
Thank you so much, Angelo. Appreciate your story.
You're welcome.
So just that little story there, that's a common theme every quarter that we get from our members of our community that are thankful for any type of help that they're receiving. And the outcomes that we see out of them is kind of amazing as they move forward in their lives. So with that, our recommendation is that you would accept an update on the county's investment for five million dollars in the, from the American Rescue Plan Act funding for the provision of navigation and case navigation, management services. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions from the board?
Next one question. The two biggest services provided were food nutrition and housing stability support, mortgage assistance, utilities, which I, those are obvious. The other one is wellness programs. Can you give me some examples of wellness programs?
Yeah, a lot, a lot of these, what we, it was interesting, we noticed when we first put that item as a, as a topic, as what we would want to, you know, folks would want to see. What we've seen is various things around wellness, such as stress-relieving items. Some organizations were doing family yoga classes, you know, to try to help families cope. A lot of them aren't, a lot of these have parent cafes where they can not only talk with other parents that are dealing with similar situations and so forth. The one thing that's been interesting about these things is that a lot of the people seeking services, they either didn't have a large family network with them, right? And with these type of community-type networking opportunities gave them a sense of community now, that they're able to have other people that they can depend on or rely on or speak with, right? Building friendships and so forth. So that's what a lot of the wellness items were around, just trying to help people cope through some of their stress, stressors in their lives. Some of the extreme items, obviously, there's referrals that we would put out to behavioral health and so forth, right? But that's what some of those components are.
And the food assistance is in addition to CalFresh and WIC programs.
Correct. A lot of the community-based organizations have either some partnerships or connections with other food sources within the community, and they also have resources of their own that they provide assistance for.
Thank you.
Ter.
Just real quick, first, thank you guys, great presentation. And it's great always, you know, having the charts. We can see number of lives and then the dollar amounts we spend. But the testimonials are great, and I don't, Esperanet and Center for Human Services, I just see, I see Perfecto out there, but I want to bug Perfecto. Perfecto, you want to come up just for a second and talk about, sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here. I want you, just come, can you come up here just for a second and talk a little bit about the programming that you did? Sorry, you did not get a heads up this coming, did you?
I was, I was planning on coming because I realized that this was going to be discussed. Of course, my name is Perfecto Munoz. I'm glad to be in front with all of you. This, this program that was funded through, through the ARPA monies had really made a difference in terms of what we did in terms of the outreach and the navigating of individuals. As you can see, that our performance, we were a small group, we're a small agency compared to some of the bigger ones, but we have, I believe, we really outperformed what we could do as an organization in terms of the quantity of people coming to seek help, food subsidies, those who are looking for some kind of assistance for MID. MID, some of the bills were incredible. And this was all due because they didn't have a job. And so one of the things that we did was we reached out to MID and talked to the Board of Director over there and said, hey, what can we do to, to help these families? And we did, in terms of coming up with a system of how they could, we pay so much and the families take a little bit of obligation to, you know, pay the difference, but we try to pay all of it if they can't afford to do it at all. We also did rental assistance, not using these monies, but using monies that we had set aside for rental assistance. And we had up to, we spent over almost eighty thousand dollars just on rental assistance during that period of time, that, over that period that we had this grant. And that's because we made a commitment to help these families. So the, the important thing is the navigation program has been a great contributor to what we've been able to do. We helped them with healthcare issues in terms of getting counseling. One of the things during this whole transition with COVID, many of the children of these families had a sense of trauma, you know, the death of a family who came of COVID, and what is going to happen to me if my mother or my dad gets ill? And so we had a lot of, our, we have a small mental health services program. We have a licensed clinical social worker and a staff by a total of three. And we've been able to work with these families to help them make that transition as, to work with that child, but as a whole family, not just as an individual child, but the family itself. So we did a great job in terms of navigating those services to them over there at the, at the Wellness Center, which is off camp, off-site. And we also were able to do just a variety of things. And I think that what I'm really saying is that these kinds of programs are critical to the county. There is going to be an issue for health, and there's going to be an issue for food. There's going to be an issue for utilities and rent. As you know, housing is a big issue in our area. We have multiple families living in multiple, in these homes because they can't afford or can't find anything to rent because rent is very high at some places. Our rentals are not available at all. So issues of housing is critical. So this gives you a pretty perspective of what we do, and, and I'm proud of the, the team that put this together. Lily Felix, Raina Peralas have been the key drivers behind our success in our navigation program. Yes, we spent our money, but our money was spent wisely because we met the challenge of our community. We didn't just, you know, pencil it in to stretch it out to 26. We wish we could have, but the need was so great that we had to do what we had to do. And, and so we still, we still operate our navigation program. We decided to find some money, find a little bit of money, but we're going to continue that navigation program because we are going to try to make a difference. And, and since we have this big need for food, we opened a food pantry. I didn't want a food pantry because we didn't have the capacity, but we decided to do a food pantry. And, and now, because it's really hard to manage the food pantry without responsibilities that are given to us by the food pantry or the organization out of Manteca. And finally, the other, other part of that is that the, the difference is that we made a difference with FIG came in. They're a county agency that does, once a month, they come in with food, fresh fruits and vegetables. We have people lined up in front of the building, seven in the morning, and they're not there until 10:00. Just, just the need for standing in line is a key indicator that there's a need for these kinds of things or these services that we have. So with that, I'm going to stop and, and I'll sit down, and thank you very much for listening to me. Okay, thank you, Ter.
Perfecto, thank you for doing that. And without any, any heads up that we're going to do that. Again, we look at charts and numbers, but it's really, it's really great to hear the actual stories of what's going on out there. And, and you're just, you're a superstar out there, Perfecto, what you're doing. You're out there in the trenches, you and your team, and we appreciate everything you're doing on the west side, and we just get a great return for our investment. Every time we invest in you, you produce great results. So, so thank you for what you're doing.
If there's no other questions, I'm going to open up public comment. Come on up.
It sounds like you guys are really doing a good job. The one thing I can see that they could probably work with is we have a lot of franchises of different food companies and everything that we should be able to work with. They should be able to donate. We ought to give them some kind of tax incentive to help us with the poor, since they are businesses in our community, and I'm sure they would want to do that. It's almost like if we would put all the homeless together and we'd set up with the franchises to work on different days to provide food for the homeless or people that needed food, they would want to give. Because in one way, we give them an advantage that they're helping their communities, you know, and there's enough of them. You break it down, maybe Kentucky Fried Chicken will do it one day, Taco Bell does it another way. I mean, but they should contribute, and we should make it that they want to, and I'm sure they do want to, but we never really put it together to give them those incentives. So sometimes, maybe we should look at that and reach out our arms and see if we can get help from our own business people in our community. Because I think that would be a great thing for everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Evan. Ron, I saw you getting up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Romney Martry again. I have two, a couple of questions. You said the biggest expenditure was in West Modesto, which makes sense to me. Then, I don't know if you misspoke, or you said in North Modesto. My understanding of the demographic is mostly affluent families, since they're clients of mine. Could you clarify what you consider North Modesto, or did you misspeak?
So yeah, North Modesto was a North Modesto area, obviously a vintage fair mall area, Salida area, some of those areas. And just a quick note, there isn't any, how should I say it, financial need that's a requirement in order to be, you know, to provide, to get any type of assistance for whatever that is, right? And it could be anything from, like I said, it could be just help with an application, right? Or help with some job services or something like that, right? So it could be one of many things.
Oh, thank you. Well, you partly answered my second question. It sounded like mostly, you know, financial services, help with food, help with housing, or anything, you know, utility bills. I was going to ask about other services. For example, if someone is unemployed for a somewhat extended period of time, and you've been supporting them, but they can't get rehired at their old place, and your gentleman who was speaking, that's a gig job, and it'd be nice to support them, maybe get a more substantial job. Gig work is highly unstable. So you do have help with employment possibilities?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of our, so a lot of our community-based organizations not only have internal resources of their own, right? But they also tap into resources such as like our workforce development, for example, right? To make connections there. Local employers as well, right? Making connections there. Community colleges, right? Making the connection there to try to see if there's any technical education that one could provide and so forth. So they offer a lot of that type of resource as well. The other thing is, you know, a lot of these items, folks sometimes just needed just really basic assistance on how to, you know, maybe how to interview or how to, you know, navigate the employment world in this age of no more paper applications, all computer applications, right? So a lot of these folks sometimes will step in for some of those types of assistance. So.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
Sure. Thank you, Ron. Any other public comment? All right, I'll bring it back to the board for either further comments or motion to accept.
Motion to accept.
Have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Acceptance of an update on Stanislaus County investment of American Rescue Plan Act funding to community infrastructure in county island communities and to, and to economic development in Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park. Public Works, David Lehman.
We're here to present on what we've been doing with community infrastructure and county island communities and an update on the twelve million dollar investment for Crowes Landing Industrial Business Park. With me is Danny Mauricio of Public Works Special Projects Group, and he and I are going to be splitting this presentation this morning.
Good morning.
Take it away, Danny.
Good morning. I'll be talking about the first part, the American Rescue Plan Act, community infrastructure regarding the fifty-five point eight million dollars. In our county pockets and communities, for the last several years, Stanislaus County has been working to address infrastructure needs within unincorporated developed neighborhoods of the county. On August 2011, Stanislaus County Board of Supervisors took several actions intended to guide infrastructure improvements and support the annexation of unincorporated pocket areas to incorporated cities, where priority was given to sewer main lines and potable water systems, and storm drainage would be considered a second priority in areas subject to persistent standing water. Here is a map of the forty-one urban pockets and thirteen county communities and their locations within the, within the county. Here are images of the infrastructure that currently exists in our county communities. There are roads, no sidewalks, and you can see pedestrians and bicyclists on the road, as well as when we do have rain, poor drainage, again, no sidewalks, and the effects of poor drainage on our road systems. So in August of 2022, the board previously approved funding distribution as shown on the table for the initial investment and was later revised in March of 2023 for the additional five point eight million dollars. In September, board, in September of 2022, the board accepted the final recommendation to invest funds in the following seven communities: Tobega San Jose, Kenwood Star, Riverdale, Park Track, Colorado Rouse, Herndon, Bret Hart, and Park One. With the five point eight million dollars in ARPA, that's additional investment, there were some neighborhoods that received additional funds, and three new neighborhoods were added to the list: Valley Home, Sylvan Coffee, Hickman. Here is a cross-section of the proposed improvements, and below is an example of Here is a cross-section of the proposed improvements, and below is an example of what we anticipate these neighborhoods to look like, similar to our Shackleford neighborhood. And this is the intersection of Santa Fe Avenue and Broadway Avenue.
Thank you, Danny. In District One, Tobega-Santa Fe neighborhood, the city of Riverbank is awarded and under construction. Valley Home neighborhood, the sidewalk project, it's awarded and fully funded. By our neighborhoods in Sylvan Coffee, this sidewalk project is going to be out to bid in October and is fully funded. District Two, Kenwood Star in the city of Turlock, it'll be out to bid in about two weeks and is fully funded. District Two, Hickman Project, fully funded, out to bid, winter, spring. This one's fairly small. It'll be a spring/summer project next year. District Three, Riverdale Track in the city of Modesto, we're waiting for bid authorization from the State Water Board for the water lines for the city of Modesto part of the project. One, two, two weeks after the authorization, we'll be out to bid, and we'll be working with the board member to make sure there's funding there. District Four, Colorado Rouse, bids open September 10th. We'll discuss options once we get bid opens, openings there. So we'll be briefing with, with D4. Herndon Neighborhood, plans are the done, project bidding pending results of Colorado Rouse. We'll coordinate again with D4 on options for Herndon Infrastructure Project. D5, Bret Hart, project bids on, opens on September 4th. We'll work, we'll work with the city of Modesto. We're not sure how much their water improvements are going to be. And then when construction costs are known, we'll do individual briefing on Bret Hart. And Park Lawn was approved today. Yay. And so the board also invested $30 million in economic development and job creation. And part of that was Crow's Landing Industrial Business Park. The clip is in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County near Crow's Landing. It's the former Naval Air Station out there. 1,528 acre site, which will be developed into an industrial business park with general aviation airport, public facilities, a multimodal transportation corridor in support of infrastructure. Project will be developed in three phases over 30 to 40 years. Build out, there will be over 14 million square feet of vertical building space, 370 acre public use airport, and over 14,000 living wage jobs. The project, the project that's being considered right now out to bid is, well, actually, we opened bids, is to construct water facility improvements to serve Crow's Landing Industrial Business Park and the Crow's Landing community. These facilities include water storage, pumping, treatment at the Crow's, our business park, water main and fink, and water well improvements in the Crow's Landing community. And here's the, the project again. We have environmental clearance. We opened bids. We're going to be bringing a recommendation to the board for award, and that was $12 million of ARPA and other funds. And staff is asking for the board to accept this update and accept an update on the $12 million of ARPA funding for Crow's Landing Industrial Business Park, and staff's available for questions.
Any questions for Dave or Danny?
I just want to ask the question. Last time we looked at the county islands, it was three quarters of a billion dollars to do all the improvements. I'm sure cost of construction index is up, but do you have a total?
No, we haven't, we haven't looked at that. Shoot, Andrew and I were just talking about it. Construction costs are up like 24% in the last few years. It's, inflation's still out there. And, yeah, so we can update that number, but I would, I would bring it up a little.
I'm trying to make a point that the, the need far outstrips the once-in-a-lifetime, we all look at this as once-in-a-lifetime opportunity money, and the 50 million, and then there was an additional 15 million that was put in to each, well, 3 million per district. And it's a drop in the bucket when you see these prices to complete whole sections. We can only do this incrementally or a phased approach. But again, this is something we haven't done in many, many, many years, even had the opportunity to do. And, and again, we'll keep working on it. And I, when we did the original breakdown, I think it was on the, the initial funding distribution was based on the need by district. Because redistricting took keys out of my district, and I got a city of Waterford, and then Empire was removed from District One. And so District Five ended up with a couple of more, two areas that were, had more need. And so when we initially broke down the funding, we took the total cost, I think it was like $238 million versus my district, the need was about 70, well, less than $70 million. So we proportionally phased in that money, which really gave an opportunity to fix those more challenged areas. And I appreciate that, that we were able to do that as a board, as I continue to say, because there would be no chance. And our districts, we could have taken care of lots of issues, but that wouldn't have been fair. So, again, thanks for all your work.
Any other comments?
Yeah, just, just, I say this all the time, but the one good thing, there's always the silver lining and everything, and the one good thing that came out of COVID was the, was the government printed a lot of money, and they, and they gave it to us as county here, gave it, gave some of our taxpayer money back to us. And so this, as Vito said, this is something that we've, ever since I've been here, generations before me, talked about county pockets for us to get to. And, and we're finally able to put a very small dent, but a dent, in, in all the work that needs to be done there. So I know the costs have taken off. I, I think to some extent, there was some good news out there a little bit, that some costs actually were coming down. I think you guys had some bids coming in a little bit lower than what you anticipated on some of these things. But, yeah, we're all looking forward to, to getting these, at least these projects started. And then hopefully we'll, not that we want another pandemic to get another $107 million, but we'll hopefully find some more money to keep working on this stuff. So thank you, guys.
And Dave, Danny, just thank you for your presentation. It's great to see these projects finally starting to come up to the point of construction. We've been talking about it for a long, ever since Terry had the great idea of going around to all the districts and holding meetings and taking a look at all of these different places. Thank you for, for doing that, Terry. It was eye-opening. But I know we've tested your department, your team's bandwidth in, in handling all of this, all of this stuff. And I just want to say thank you for the great job, and it's finally starting to turn the corner.
Chris Brady, Andrew Malizia, and Danny Mauricio have done an excellent job managing all these, so the thanks goes to them.
Great. All right, we're going to open it up to public comment. Any public comment on this? Ron, come on up.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Of course, I have a little specifics I'd like to ask Director Lehman. One is, I always ask you this, but are all these maps you should have stayed currently on this site? So I can examine those.
They, they should be attached to the board agenda item.
Oh, oh, so I'll go to that link and do that. Okay, thank you. And I have a, I don't know how much you know about the specifics. I have a question about Bret Hart. Do you know what specific streets and sidewalks are going to go in at this point? Or do you need to kind of judge that as you go along?
No, it's, it's shown on the exhibit attached to the board item. So it's, it's kind of the north end of Bret Hart.
Okay, yeah, my concern, I'm sure this is on your radar, I'm not questioning you, but the section of Las Vegas and Butte avenues that are right there at Henshaw School are in awful shape. But the other side of it is, if you're going to do any work there, you know, the parents are picking up their kids and dropping off their kids, it gets a lot more traffic. So I wonder if you're considering about, you know, how much extra reinforcement and work needs to be done there to secure those roads to be a little sturdier than elsewhere in the neighborhood, which I know it all, it all needs help. But, you know, I just want to point your attention to Henshaw.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments on this agenda item? Seeing that, I'm going to bring it back to the board for motion.
Sub moved.
I have a first.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Right, moving, moving right along. Acceptance of an update on the investment of the American Rescue Plan Act funds into Stanislaus 2030 Investment Blueprint Strategies for the period of April through June 30th, 2025. Chief Executive Office, Erica Ignacio, Amanda Hughes, Karen Warner.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, Board members, CEO Hayes, and County Council Bows. Erica Ignacio, Deputy Executive Officer. Today I have the pleasure of introducing the two key presenters on this item, asking the board to accept an update on the investment of the ARPA funds into Stanislaus 2030. Today you're receiving the fourth quarter report, but you will also be hearing a presentation highlighting the activities for the fiscal year and giving insight on what's coming up next. First, you will hear from Stanislaus 2030 Executive Director Amanda Hughes. She will focus on three initiatives: childcare, small business support, and talent development, which the board approved $8 million towards these initiatives. Amanda's presentation will then be followed by Karen Warner, who is the Director for Beam Circular. She will be summarizing the activities that have transpired over the last fiscal year and the nine initiatives that the board funded and the amount of $10 million. With that said, I'm going to go on ahead and hand over the presentation to Amanda.
Thank you, Erica. Good morning, everyone. I'm excited to be here today to provide an update on Stanislaus 2030. As you will see, it's been a busy year. It might be you. Okay. So as you recall, Stanislaus 2030 was really organized around five specific focus areas to really enable and drive a more regional, strong economy. Oh, you can't see it on the slide, but, you know, the Board of Supervisors approved a total of $18 million to invest in recommendations across those broad five focus areas. So what you're going to hear today is an update on childcare, small business expansion, as well as investments made in talent development. You'll also hear a presentation from Karen that'll come up and talk about our trade sector development around Beam Circular. But we are excited to bring up some of the partners that are actually implementing these programs. There's some projects that we've been talking about in theory, and I'm excited to say that we're actually getting those into practice today. So with that, if you can go on to the next slide, let's talk a little bit about childcare expansion. So you'll remember, when I was here a year ago, I shared a report that talked about the dramatic childcare shortage we had in our county. We have one slot for every five kids who needs childcare. So with that, we developed an ambitious strategy in partnership with Nurture to grow and expand 1,500 businesses over the next 10 years. This is an ambitious strategy that requires a lot of coordination. And with the support from Stanislaus County, the city of Modesto, administrative support from First Five Stanislaus, we've been able to get this project to scale. A bidding process happened a year ago to bring Nurture back to grow the childcare entrepreneurship program. And so we're excited to share today some results from that partnership. No, just move to the next slide, please. Thank you. So as you can see, we're making some progress. To date, 98 individuals have completed the Nurture coursework, 87 have actually received their childcare license, and 83 have actually opened their doors or are in business. That's created over 660 new permanent licensed childcare slots. And I'm also really happy to say that we're reaching a diverse population in Stanislaus County. So a third of the participants have less than 25,000 in, in income a year, and two-thirds of the participants are less than 50,000. As you can see, we're, we're tracking this data by zip codes and cities, so we can ensure that the program itself is reaching the neighborhoods that have the highest need for childcare. We hosted an event in July, which we were, thank you so much, Chairman Condit, for coming and presenting that day. We also heard from a representative from the city of Modesto. In partnership with Modesto Chamber and the Stanislaus Latino Chamber, we hosted all of these new entrepreneurs for a ribbon cutting. And I have to say, we almost ran out of ribbon. I don't think the chambers have actually, you know, honored that many businesses in one day, but when you, at the time, I think we were at 75 new business owners, and so many of them came along with their families, and it was just a real honor to celebrate them. And for us, you know, when we're talking about these projects and programs in theory, to actually see the people that are benefiting and the stories that they get to share. And those stories matter, and we're using them to help with promotion because we have a lot more work to do over the next year. And speaking of promotion, we're excited about a partnership that we did over the summer. No, just go to the next slide, please. Thank you. With Central Valley Opportunity Center to ensure that that program, we're reaching out to families that may be in rural communities across the county. This included a summer campaign. We partnered with CBOC to help us with some radio commercials in Spanish. We also did outreach on, on the farms to, to tell workers about this opportunity. So if someone in their families was interested in opening a childcare business, they would get that information. We also were really targeted about putting billboards across the county in strategic locations to, you know, save resources. So CBOC, in partnership with us and Nurture, split the cost to do this outreach campaign. And now I'd like to share a little promo video that we also invested in to help us get the word out. This is still a teaser. It's, we're like finalizing it right now, but I wanted to give you a taste of what we're working on to do outreach. I don't see it on the big screen yet. One moment, please. We had tested this morning, just so you know.
If anybody can fix it, it's John.
One of our intentions is we created multiple videos. Some are used as promo commercials to help with recruitment and outreach. We're also doing a video to help build for investment, so we can share with other funders that may be interested in supporting this program. And we're also using it to tell the story of the work, which we think is really important as we're building out support for the childcare project over the next year. And if we can't show it, it's absolutely okay. I will email this video to the Board of Supervisors to watch it at a later time.
Okay, we got a second. We always have these number two pencils up here on the dais. Does anybody use a number two pencil anymore?
Supervisor withrow, my, my colleagues know that I'm religious about pencils. I don't use pen, it's too permanent.
That's great. No, that's an account.
Childcare, take a free virtual course that guides you through getting a childcare license and the fundamentals of running a successful business. Ever wanted to run a home childcare? Take a free virtual course that guides you through getting a childcare license and the fundamentals of running a successful business.
In Stanislaus County, we can provide $2,500 startup grants to get their businesses off the ground.
Spanish and English is the languages that they offer as well, and I feel like it gives them that empowerment that they can do it.
Don't wait. Courses start every six weeks. Call or text 765 daycare to get started today.
So that's just a teaser. We really, you know, we'll work with our local partners to help push out those commercials so that we can invest in more entrepreneurs over the course of the year. Okay, and with that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Yolanda Maraz to provide an update on our small business portfolio.
Good morning. In Stanislaus County, we established this ambitious goal of being the best county to star sustain or scale a business in California. So with that, if you might remember, we spoke to entrepreneurs during our planning phase, and we heard that some, many of them had difficulties learning how to navigate the licensing and permitting processes. We also learned that they didn't know where to find services. They had, they weren't aware of all the different programs and organizations helping small businesses in our county. We We heard that many of them had challenges accepting, finding financing and affordable lending options. And then we knew that many of them wanted many opportunities to get new contracts. They wanted opportunities for networks, and they didn't know how to expand their business. With that, we came up with a plan that we presented to you last year, and we're prioritizing the following strategies that I'll walk you through. The first line is streamline permitting. The goal of the strategy is to create a cleaner, more accessible process to get your permits. We're very excited to work with the different municipalities, different county departments, as well as our chambers of commerce, to analyze and do a journey map of the different processes to obtain permits, so that we can come up with recommendations, eliminate barriers where possible and duplication, and make it easier and shorten times for entrepreneurs who are looking to start their business. This is one of the strategies I'm most excited about, the local procurement readiness. As you remember, our businesses are looking to obtain contracts, and we're looking to help them do business and win bids with our local anchor institutions, meaning our hospitals, our different government entities, universities, and large businesses. For this, we know that it is crucial to support our businesses because 70% of that funding stays in the local community when those contracts are awarded to local businesses. And so I'm going to ask Miguel Breciado from our local SBDC to come and provide an update on this program.
Hi, it's great to meet you all. I'm excited to be a part of the local procurement and supplier readiness campaign. So the goal, as Yoli mentioned, is to really connect all of the local, whether it's a public or private organization or anchor institution, as we're calling them, with contracting opportunities to local entrepreneurs that are ready to contract. We're kind of taking a twofold approach. Right now, we're conducting an assessment with those organizations that have contracts. We're already meeting with them. We have a few that we need to schedule and identifying what is it that local entrepreneurs are missing, or what are they not aware of? Sometimes bids are posted on the website, on another site completely, and we want to bridge that gap as much as possible and hear from the buyer side what it is that they're looking for. And on the other end, we're working with entrepreneurs one-on-one already as well to get them ready to contract and successfully submit bids. So we're also working with a sister SBDC, pulling together all our resources as much as possible to develop a webinar that will launch in February to help entrepreneurs bid on contracts. They have started a similar program in the past, and they've secured almost, or helped their entrepreneurs secure, almost $1 billion in contracts. So we're excited to take that and apply it here in the county, and we're going to ask for county participation with that as well. We're really taking a local-first approach. It's the easiest way for an entrepreneur to break into the world of contracting, whether it's with the government or private organizations. Getting that city or state or school district, large business seal on their business resume is going to be a huge help when they want to move on to larger opportunities, working with businesses that are statewide or national, or even state or national government departments or offices. So if you or any member of the public has any connection to any local institution, please let us know. We'd be more than happy to double check and see if we already got them scheduled, or if not, help us get an additional point of contact so we can bring them in. And if you know of any businesses looking to break into the world of contracting, let us know as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Miguel. We're happy to report we have at least six or seven cities already in the process and on the queue for interviews. We are working with, so far, six of our local chambers of commerce to go interview entrepreneurs, bring in and make sure they're part of the conversation. And then obviously, the county departments that have to do with permitting, we're grateful that they showed up to our kickoff meeting and are very willing to participate. The next strategy is capital, access to capital and CDFI capacity. Again, we heard time and time again from entrepreneurs that it was really hard to secure funding. And we, in Stanislaus County, are fortunate to have three local credit unions that recently have obtained the Community Development Financial Institution designation. This allows them to pull funding from different sources, but they're young in their designation. So with the help of Workforce Development, we published on our request for proposals and selected Cameo Network to come and provide technical assistance and coaching to those three CDFIs so that they can maximize their designation. Part of this contract is to conduct an internal assessment of the CDFIs to help them identify which products and services they better suited, they were better suited to provide, and again, increase the lending options for our entrepreneurs. The other part of the contract is to help them identify additional sources of funding that could help offset the cost of those loans. Oh, I have, I have the clicker. I forget. And then the last strategy we're working on is a one-stop-shop resource. Again, when we talked to entrepreneurs, especially entrepreneurs of color, they were not aware of all the different resources and programs in our county. And so we are working to develop a one-stop, one-stop-shop solution. It is very important that this strategy stays fresh and updated. We'll do an inventory of all the events, programs, services, organizations, et cetera, permitting processes, put them in a, in a, in a website and potentially brick and mortar place. But this strategy is only important if we can maintain it ever fresh, which is the challenge. And so for that, we're very grateful that our partners at Workforce Development raised their hand to be the organization that maintains permanently the information and the strategy. For that, I'm going to invite Dulce Pisano from Workforce Development to give you an update on this strategy.
Thank you for the introduction, Yolanda. Well, good morning, Chairman, Board, CEO Hayes, County Council Boz. I'll share the way that the department has been planning, implementing, and supporting the one-stop resource. So currently, we are assessing the one-stop needs, so exactly what does it need? We're looking at its digital infrastructure, at other, analyzing and researching other one-stops in the U.S. to understand what their best practices are, including things that they're doing really well and have been effective. And we are also looking at different business support services that are offered within Stanislaus County to really assess, identify any inefficiencies, gaps, and any way we can grow and integrate other services within Stanislaus County. So we're really in the assessment mode of what exactly do we need to make this successful? With that, I'll talk about some of our objectives. So one of our main objectives, and it's kind of been thrown around, is really having a centralized, centralized information for business and really any user to go ahead and access. This can include things like access to capital, technical assistance, and business networks. And one of the biggest objectives of which we're excited is launching the one-stop platform. Again, to make it accessible for anybody in the county to go ahead and use. With launching the platform, we are creating a system to ensure that we are able to maintain current and accurate information for, for any businesses to use. And with that, one of the biggest goals is continuing the innovation enhancement of business services, business service support that is offered to businesses in Stanislaus County. And really to tie everything together, I'll say that this, this is not, this cannot be possible without the support and the work that the small business team is doing. So Yoli and Miguel did mention some things. So the streamlined permitting, which is supported by our local chambers and county and city officials, the local procurement supplier initiative powered by SBDC, access to capital and CDFI capacity led by our different financial institutions, the goal is to have them housed at the one-stop. So again, making it easy for anybody who is wanting to upscale their business, open a business, or just curious to go ahead and access in one place. What we're really striving for and where we're leading is the resource management portion of the one-stop, which is ensuring that we have durable, accurate, and relevant information. And overall, our goal is general maintenance of the platform. And we're all doing this to ensure that the businesses have the correct information, easy, accessible, clear. And we're not just doing this for the business of today, but we're doing that for the businesses of the future. So with that, I say thank you, and I'll hand it back to Amanda.
Thank you, Dulce. And I would just like to say a quick plug. Workforce Development is holding a lot of this work with us. They are a co-partner, a backbone support. And Dulce has been just a joy to work with. She came into this work to help manage a lot of the projects. As you can hear, there's a lot of projects getting into contract, and Dulce is making sure that those projects get into contract quickly. So I just want to honor like what a great partnership this has been. So thank you. So I'm going to talk briefly about talent development in the interest of time. I know we need to move a little quickly. As you recall, Stanislaus 2030 is focused on talent because it's a huge attraction to our region. It's a big driver for economic development, which is why we've been organizing over the past year and a half, bringing industry partners to the table within the manufacturing sector, our largest traded sector, to really help bridge that, that connection between what they need for, for jobs they're trying to fill and what our training providers are willing to offer to respond to their needs just in time. It has been a year of learning. We've met with lots of employers. We've hosted employer listening sessions around kind of what are those jobs? What are the challenges they're having in filling those jobs? And how can we redesign or reimagine training programs to meet the needs of today and tomorrow? So with that, super proud of the partners that have committed to our work. These are, these are individuals who represent some of our largest employers in the region who are meeting with us regularly, not just quarterly, but you know, in between meetings to vet information. We have all the education partners at the table and those that represent industry that are also coming to the table to help convene on our behalf. Workforce Development and Stanislaus 2030 are serving as a backbone team, and we've brought in colleagues from B&amp;A Star Community Economics that are helping us really think through this strategy and our grant program that we're going to talk about briefly today. All partners are getting coaching support from B&amp;A Star to make sure that any investment that we make is cohesive and that projects are implemented to fidelity. So I'm manufacturing. We know this is our largest traded sector. We're defining that broadly. These are companies that are making, you know, taking raw materials and making something else out of it. There's lots of occupations that fall under the umbrella of manufacturing. We're thinking logistics, production, engineering, but also those adjacent jobs that are not just housed in manufacturing, but we're having a hard time filling it, and we need a lot of them, like HVAC technicians and electricians. We know that we have lots of workers that need access to good quality jobs and a pathway into those jobs, and we have employers that are telling us they need talent. So our job is to create that match and make sure that the, the projects that we lift up benefit all residents of Stanislaus County. So it's a really straightforward task, but it's a little harder in, in practice. And so the point of the work is to start with those jobs, and what we've learned over the past year is that labor market data lags. So it's really important that we talk to employers regularly to really vet and get an understanding of like, what are those jobs? What are those core skills needed to fill those jobs? And do the training programs that we have actually incorporate the skills and competencies needed? And are those programs still relevant today? And for, you know, the changes that we know are coming for tomorrow? We're seeing AI, we're seeing automation. Those are all things that are happening now. So we have to create the conditions for this type of collaborative work to happen over and over again. It's not going to be a one and done, and that's the infrastructure that we're creating. You're not going to be able to read everything on this map. I'm using it as an illustration of the types of, of elements that we're digging deep into to help inform this, this broad approach. It starts with those jobs and understanding how they connect to better jobs. We're mapping out all the training programs, starting in K-12, that lead into whether it's a certificate or another two-year or four-year degree, and what are those competencies? And how do the different partners that are doing training programs intersect? Do they have an articulation agreement? Are graduates from one program able to get credit into another program? It's a pretty complex project, but we have the supports we need to really better understand this. And we are addressing some of the gaps that we've shared with you in the past. These are not surprising things, but we do want to overcome some of that fragmentation, the, the lack of feedback loops between employers and workforce programs. We really want to address some of the limitations we see in work-based learning programs and also make sure programs are relevant and that they stay relevant and that we have the ability to adapt quickly. And we want to make sure that everyone knows about these programs. So we have to have really good community awareness and navigation tools in place so that learners, no matter where they are, can get into a good quality training program. So I summarize that, but this is what we're investing towards. We have a really large grant program that is open around 1.1 million in funding that we're moving over the next month and a half. Our intention with Workforce Development is to invest in projects ranging from 50 to around 195K that are really addressing those big ideas. Are they growing work-based learning programs? Are they enabling stronger collaboration between employers and those, those training entities? We had an information session earlier this month to help partners. We're doing another one this week. Our intention is to get into contract by the end of October, so that a year from now we can report on progress with these programs. Any partner that gets funded also gets a lot of coaching support in the implementation phase, as well as access to our grant writer to help them build a long-term sustainability plan for these investments. And with that, I'm going to pass it over to my colleague Jorge De Nava to provide an update on his work with CBOC.
Good morning. Jorge De Nava, Executive Director, Central Valley Opportunity Center. Good morning, Chairman, Chairman Condit, Supervisor, CEO Hayes, County Council Boz. CBOC was one of the first projects that was funded in the Stan 2030 project. It was actually March 28th, 2023. That was my birthday, so I remember that. Nonetheless, we had two projects in the talent development pool. One of them was a farm worker resource center project where this board approved a $200,000 investment that had leveraged $800,000 from the state, and we were able to operate a farm worker resource center throughout Stanislaus County. In addition, the second project was a workforce development project that was another million dollars, where we were able to serve 100 farm workers with vocational training, education, and job placement assistance. In total, we met the enrollment goal of 100, and we are still working with 21 participants in that program, and 69 have gone to work already. So we're proud to have an 87% job placement rate. And those jobs were well-paying, high-paying jobs, ranging from $20 an hour to $33 an hour. But the key to that is we've taken seasonal work from our participants and now provided them with year-round, full-time employment. Basically, they went from having a job to having a career, and that's due to the investment in the 2030 project. So thank you for that. And lastly, we're proud to announce, we announced it a couple of months ago, but we are in full-blown operation where we have leveraged another million-dollar investment to extend this program for at least another two years. So your initial county investment has not gone by the wayside. The state has recognized the important work that we're doing here in Stanislaus County and have gotten on board and invested so that we can continue both the farm worker resource center project and the workforce development services for farm workers here in the county. With that said, back to you, Amanda.
Okay. And so finally, I just wanted to acknowledge, you know, Stanislaus 2030 is committed to measuring the impact of our work. We've brought in an evaluator that's meeting with anyone that's been connected closely that can speak to program impacts, but also new funding that's been brought in, policies that have shifted, new relationships or collaborations between different partners as a result of Stanislaus 2030. And we're going to take all these reflections and learnings and take them back with our, our advisors to really help us through what's the long-term play with Stanislaus 2030? What did this investment result? And what can we learn from it so we understand, you know, how we can take the best from this work and move it forward beyond December 2026? And just finally, I always like to end on an exciting note. We are on track to raise, you know, the $6 million, which was our goal by the end of next year. We're about 62% there. This is money that we've been able to raise personally or leveraged our partners in some way. We're around, oh, can't see past your head, around 3.7 million. Thanks, Tony, that we've been able to bring in. And just in the last quarter, we've brought in about $1 million from North Valley Thrive to help advance the childcare work with Nurture, as well as to bring a new manufacturing work-based learning program to our county. So we're really excited about the progress. I know we went super fast today, but if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
I do just want to note that we have more of this presentation on this agenda item, but this was a natural breaking point prior to Karen coming up for Beam Circular. If you have any questions for the 2030 team or any of the presenters that were part of this, this section.
Any questions for Amanda and her team? All right. Thank you, Amanda.
Thank you.
Right. Yeah. A public comment will be after Karen. We still have a presentation going on.
Good morning, Chairman Condit, CEO Hayes, Council Boz, and Supervisors. So great to be with you all again and really looking forward to offering this annual update from Beam Circular. As you all know, Beam really was formed to establish Stanislaus County and the North San Joaquin Valley as a global leader in bio-based manufacturing, industry development that creates good jobs and turns a lot of our local waste into revenues. So I wanted to, you have, you know, a fuller report, obviously, in written form. This presentation is really about a few spotlights and highlights to give you a little bit more of a flavor of what's been happening and a few of the stories of our work so far. And we're grateful to have a couple of our partners here today to share stories as well. First, wanted to give kind of a really quick flash of some of our biggest areas of momentum and accomplishments from this past year. So not to laundry list at you, but did want to highlight a few things that were really big milestones from the past year. First and foremost, we expanded our partner network to over 110 public and private institutions. These are organizations that have formally signed on to our collaborative of partners called CBio Collaborative. We launched a really elite and exciting accelerator program, which you'll hear more about in a little bit, to support growing startups, creating jobs in this space with pathways to scale here in Stanislaus County and the broader region. We funded 15 new workforce development programs that are supporting students and workers on pathways and career exposure in the bioeconomy. We funded innovation and capacity building projects for 14 small businesses with funding from the state of California. We secured intake forms from 74 companies who are interested in developing operations in the North San Joaquin Valley. And our business and economic development team are working closely with those companies to help support their pathways in our region. And the kind of backbone infrastructure side, Beam Circular secured our federal 501(c)(3) nonprofit designation and completed our first full year of operations as an independent organization, which is an exciting step forward in really establishing a long-term sustainable hub for this activity in our region. We also were able to raise over $12 million in this past year in new funding, bringing the total new grants for Beam projects in our portfolio to $25 million in non-county funding. So there was a $10 million commitment from the county and we've been able to double at a half that with new state, federal, and private dollars being brought in to advance our regional bioeconomy efforts. And we were also really excited to see the bioeconomy named as a state priority industry, which really allows us to advance long-term investment and partnerships with the state of California into this space. Probably the biggest theme from this past year, 2024 to 2025, has been launching the many different programs and projects that make up the really ambitious Stan 2030 bio-manufacturing sector strategy. This slide represents the range of programs and services that we offer through Beam Circular. Those services and resources range from workforce development to R&amp;D and innovation services for companies, business and economic development, which ranges from working with really small entrepreneurs who are just forming their companies to engaging with multinational manufacturing companies and helping them find a pathway here, community prosperity and engagement work, which we'll be chatting more about in this presentation, as well as public policy work, which really has to do with working at the local, state, and federal level as an intermediary between businesses, community, and public policymakers so that at the local level, we can develop, you know, zoning and permitting strategies to support this growing industry. And then at the state and federal level, we can both be, you know, a champion for local businesses and manufacturing operations as well as support navigation of incentives and resources and help those resources flow to our local level. We then have a growing portfolio of what we call anchor projects, which are significant investments and projects being developed in partnership with others. That includes CBio Collaborative, our network of partners, our accelerator program, a project called Bio Circular Valley, which is a five-year project being philanthropically funded to develop shared data to support the supply chain of waste streams or feedstocks from food and ag and connecting those with manufacturers, and then development of the California Bioeconomy Innovation Campus. We've grown our team to 14 staff members and I'm really grateful to have a super mission-driven team that has been so excited to grow this work and deploy these resources on behalf of our local community. So that's kind of a snapshot of the big picture. We've been really this year excited to start to see the transformation from planning and foundation laying to actually realizing these projects and strategies in the real world and starting to get some early wins. This is a little bit of, what I'm going to do here is give a few spotlights on some of those anchor projects and share some stories from some of the businesses we're working with. We'll chat about our community work and then some workforce development projects, including most recently, the launch of the Stanislaus County-funded ARPA workforce projects. So on the partnership front, as I mentioned, we've really expanded this partner network. We now have over 110 institutional partners of CBio Collaborative. This network of partners is co-led by Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory and UC Merced, who've really been alongside us from day one over the past two years to build this network. But we also have brought in the Manufacturers Council of the Central Valley and the We Will K-16 Regional Collaborative, which supports and coordinates education and workforce training efforts across the region to align them with priority industries. We're really excited that We Will has determined that the bioeconomy will be its next priority sector. And so we'll be able to work with that collaborative to deploy resources and industry learnings and frameworks across our K-12 school districts, as well as our community colleges and university partners as part of our workforce development efforts. We also are excited that over half, about 60% of our collaborative partners are industry partners. And those industry partners range from small businesses and startups to large, global, leading manufacturers that operate around the world and are coming alongside and part of this initiative because they are excited about pathways to manufacturing here in the Central Valley of California. Next, we'll share a few updates, milestones from the past year in progress on the California Bioeconomy Innovation Campus. In the Stanislaus 2030 Investment Blueprint, this project was referred to as the Biodeschel Manufacturing Testbed Facility or that pilot and demo scale facility meant to help companies bridge their technologies, get them out of the lab and into the market. We've been making a lot of progress on this really ambitious project. And this past year, we secured funding from the state of California as part of the 2025 Budget Act. We were really excited about this funding, particularly this year in a really tough budget environment. And it's really a demonstration of the state of California's belief in this project and that they are making a big bet on Stanislaus County to place this resource and this facility here in Stanislaus County to serve as a way to catalyze and advance the bioeconomy for California as a whole. So we were excited about that initial budget allocation of $8 million toward construction and development, which really is an initial investment for a long-term phased approach to building this project here in Stanislaus County. We are in the midst of a site selection process. We've been partnering with Real Estate Partners JLL, as well as Opportunity Stanislaus, to do a review of sites across Stanislaus County. That site selection process is currently underway and going through robust assessment of a shortlist of sites in order to narrow in on where to develop this project in a way that will maximize impact for the community. We have also this year been working very closely with our industry consultants and partners at Hawkwood Biotech to conduct a really deep analysis of user needs. We've been conducting surveys, interviews, and market research to refine the scope for the innovation campus and to plan on phasing for this project to make sure that we are meeting demand and that we have a pipeline of users in place for this project once it is established. And then finally, we were really proud to sign a letter of intent with the Valley Building Trades to develop this campus under a project labor agreement, making sure that we are prioritizing the creation of good quality jobs here in the local community throughout every phase of this project. Next, wanted to highlight one of our events. A lot of our work involves convening and bringing people together to increase the profile of Stanislaus County and the North San Joaquin Valley and bringing industry and investors to our region. We had a really successful event in May that we called Bio Catalyst. This event was sponsored by the Almond Board of California. We had 200 registrants, 27 speakers, 20 exhibitors. And we were really pleased to bring in industry leaders and investors from across the country for this event, which featured a pitch presentation from our accelerator companies, as well as expert panels and networking opportunities. It was a really fantastic opportunity to, again, elevate the profile of the North San Joaquin Valley as a growing leader in this industry. Next, again, kind of keeping this ball moving here with some highlights from the past year. We launched the inaugural cohort of the Beam Circular Startup Accelerator Program. You may recall that we did a nationwide search for an accelerator partner to work with on operating this accelerator program. We really wanted this to be a best-in-class, truly, you know, global-leading program for companies in the circular bioeconomy. We were pleased to identify an organization called Generator, which runs programs specifically in regions like the Central Valley that maybe aren't the traditional tech centers of the world, but can become booming places for innovation and entrepreneurship. We worked with Generator over the past year to launch this program. We had over 100 applications from really visionary entrepreneurs and startups from around the world, about, half of those were from California. Another good chunk was from other parts of the United States. And we had companies applying from other parts of the world as well. We ended up choosing the top six companies from that really competitive pool of applications. And we were really pleased to have in this cohort a really great mix of entrepreneurs, both local homegrown entrepreneurs, you'll hear from one today, Edgar Perez, but also companies who were founded in the Bay Area, in Davis, and one all the way in Tennessee, who are specifically working to scale their companies and create jobs here in Stanislaus County and the North San Joaquin Valley. I want to just briefly introduce you to these companies because they give you a bit of a taste for the types of organizations that we are so excited about helping to grow in this growing industry in our region. The first is called Verde Nano Materials. This is a company that takes many different types of agricultural waste and turns it into a bio-based plastic material that can be used to line packaging materials, food packaging materials, even many different types of products and many different types of applications. The next company is called Fit Candy. This is a local entrepreneur named Dion who grew up in Turlock, went to MJC, transferred to UC Davis, got his degree in food science, and is now making a really delicious candy out of watermelon rinds. He has some really fantastic and creative local business partnerships that he's established to grow his business. And he's really a rising star and leader in our community. We're really excited to see him continue to grow his company. Optimized Foods is a company out of UC Davis that's now scaling here in our region in partnership with local food processors. They take food processing waste and other agricultural side streams, and they upcycle those materials into new food ingredients that can be really delicious products, everything from cocoa and, you know, chocolate tasting ingredients for many different types of dessert products and snack foods to inputs for proteins and many, many different types of food ingredients. They are currently partnering with an olive oil processor. And we are funding their advancement of innovation to take olive palmace, the side stream from olive oil production, and turn that into high-value food ingredients. Olio is a company that creates an oil alternative from different types of ag waste, including grape palmace, which is left behind from wine making, but also almond hulls and other types of agricultural side streams. Their oil products can be used to make sustainable aviation fuels, as well as household detergents, soaps, and even potentially cosmetics. So lots of different applications for their oil product. And then Electroactive Technologies, they make green hydrogen from food and agricultural waste here in our region. And in addition to green hydrogen, they make a high-value fertilizer product, which they are currently iterating on and doing innovation work with farmers for applications as a soil amendment. And then I wanted you here directly from one of these fantastic companies. So Edgar, if you don't mind coming up and joining us, and you can share here and feel free to introduce yourself, your company, and what your experience was like in the Beam circular.
Yeah. Thanks for having me. My name is Edgar Perez, founder of Terra Rosa. So Terra Rosa started in 2019 in Turlock, California. We take nut waste products, almond hulls, and walnut husks, and we actually extract an herbicidal compound that's present in the side stream. So we are present in Turlock, California. We have a small refinery that we're trying to build up and get operating. We should be operational by this fall or hopefully this winter so we can start producing material and selling material. So we've been working very closely with Beam Circular. They've been a big support with, well, we've been participating in a lot of their, a lot of things they offer. So we participated in the Generator, which was a huge help. It introduced us to different companies that are doing something similar. But also, it gave us an opportunity to network and refine our, kind of our business model. And they gave us some guidance. We did this crash course where we met with mentors, and the mentors gave us a lot of help. So the Generator was a big help. So not only that, Beam's been a big help with grants as well. So we were missing one key piece of equipment to refine this herbicide out of the nut waste stream, which is a centrifuge. And Beam was gracious enough to grant us a grant to help buy that piece of equipment and get us into production. So that's been our experience with Beam.
And Edgar, did you want to share in your farming side as well? And maybe the origin story of the company?
Oh, yeah, so I did grow up farming. And I also have a, I worked as a crop consultant for the last 12 years. And I also worked at a lab when I first started in college. And so between my farming background and my crop consulting background, I kind of was tinkering with, trying to figure out what to do with this big problem that we have, which is huge piles of almond hulls. And I thought it would be a good soil amendment. So I thought we should apply it to the soil and it'd help out. But what I found was there was actually what you call polyphenols or alittle chemicals present in these almond hulls that inhibited seed germination. So it did give us a unique product. Most organic farmers or even conventional farmers have limited amount of herbicides. And then also in California, they're taking away herbicides. They're limiting the amount, the type of herbicide we could use. So I thought this would be a great alternative and also a sustainable alternative. And it would help the farmer out. So my background in farming is I want to help the farmer too, but also create a company that can offer new technology.
Thank you so much, Edgar.
Edgar, no, you go ahead.
I just wanted to ask the important question. The holes are dry, you can store them, as you need a food or a source.
Yeah.
And you said walnut hulls, I'm assuming husks were hulls. They're wet.
Yeah.
And you have to use them fairly quickly or they degrade. How?
So we have small, we have small capacity right now to process. We can do about 1,000 pounds an hour with the machine we have. Eventually, as we scale and we start getting sales, we do have partners in sales. We're working with Mid Valley pretty closely where they've done third-party trials. So as we expand, we hope to get a bigger refinery and equipment to where we can process enough walnut husks. But the almonds, we can get anytime. The walnut husks is a tricky one.
Yeah. And there's more value in the almond hulls, so you have a cheaper source than walnut hulls.
Yeah, so my ideal feedstock would be walnut hulls because most guys want to take them out. They want to get rid of them, most of the processors. Almond hulls, you got to pay for them. So I'd rather, but you got a small window, so you got to have enough capacity to do it. So, I mean, those are growing pains. We'll get to, once we get there, we'll.
I'll give you all you want.
So Edgar, you've been doing this since 2019, so you've been in this for about six years. So, and you talked about scaling. How many pounds of walnut shells or almond shells, whatever, does it take and to produce how many gallons of herbicide?
Yeah, one ton of, for example, walnut husk would produce 200 gallons of material.
Okay.
2019 was mostly R&amp;D. So in that picture there, those are some of the trials that we did on some of the farms over in the east side of Turlock on organic walnuts. So 2019, and then 2020 slowed us down a lot because of COVID. It was mostly, we were doing mostly R&amp;D during those years. And once we found that we had a viable product that we could actually apply to the orchards or to the fields, 2022 is when we really started building the pilot plant and scaling up. So, yeah.
So how many customers do you have going right now? It's viable, it works, right? It's successful out in the field. So, I mean, do you see your customer base just growing more and more? I would think this would be something.
Yeah, so Mid Valley is one that I mentioned. They did the third-party trial just this last spring. And they, so one of the, one of the other issues that we have is registration with the EPA and the DPR, which is what we're working on right now.
So what's the issue there?
We're trying to get exemption, so we don't have to pay for it. If not, it's going to cost me about $12 million.
Is that right, to qualify, to be able to sell this stuff?
In order to, in order to register a biopesticide in California, it'll cost you about that to do the, but we're trying to get, there's what you call FIFRA 25B exempt, which exempts you from having to go through that because it's all natural ingredients. So we are working on that.
And we're helping you with that.
Yeah, so Beam, Beam's been a big help. Opportunity Stanislaus and SBDC has been a big help. So there's a lot of resources in Modesto and Stanislaus County that's been supporting me. But yeah, Beam actually also gave me a grant for doing some third-party trials along with some, we are pen pending, so we're trying to.
That was my last question.
Yeah, we are pen pending, and we're trying to strengthen our pen. So Beam also gave us some assistance with an attorney to help strengthen our pen. So yeah, there's a lot of moving pieces. There's only four of us in the company. I'm the founder and the CEO, and then most of the other guys are running the equipment and doing trials. So we're trying to put it together and launch and generate some income and build some jobs.
Great, great. Well, good luck with it. Sounds like it's going well so far.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much Edgar. I want to highlight that, you know, the Generator team that worked with Edgar has mentored entrepreneurs all around the country. And I hope I don't embarrass him by saying this, but the managing director of our accelerator program said that Edgar was one of the best entrepreneurs he's ever worked with, and that it was frustrating to him as a venture capitalist because he wants so badly to invest in Terra Rosa because this company is so solid. Their business case is so solid. But it is so solid that Edgar doesn't necessarily need to take any venture capital and probably may not want to. So as an investor, it was cool to hear that from the outside of how investable our local companies are, so much so they may not, may not need to take that outside capital, which is pretty cool. Thank you Edgar. I next want to bring up two of Beam Circular's team members, starting Bree Gonzalez, our Community Partnerships Manager, and then Nancy Martinez, our Community Prosperity Lead, who will talk about our community work.
Awesome, thanks Karen. Good morning supervisors. It's great to see you all this morning. As Karen mentioned, my name is Bree Gonzalez. I'm the Community Partnerships Manager with Beam Circular. As you're all well aware, community is at the heart of everything that Beam does. So a successful bioeconomy in the North San Joaquin Valley is one where our community is engaged, informed, and is able to directly benefit from the bioeconomy. So the community team takes this very seriously. And over the past year, Beam has engaged with over 1,745 community members through 49 events just in Stanislaus County. So this engagement included town hall-style events, information sessions, where we received really valuable feedback directly from community members and have already been able to integrate some of that feedback into our work. We also prioritize going to community rather than having them come to us. So we did this by attending resource fairs, cultural events, backpack giveaways, et cetera, et cetera. We were everywhere all the time, and we really loved it. And so these were really fun ways to engage with community members, both young and adult, not only by sharing information about Beam Circular and the circular bioeconomy, but also by doing like hands-on STEM activities with them, like making seed paper out of recycled paper, making bioplastic out of kitchen ingredients, as well as planting vegetables. And it's actually really fun to see how excited both youth and adults get over planting vegetables. And of course, all of these activities were offered in both Spanish and English. I also do want to give a quick shout out to our incredible partners who've really helped us with this outreach. You know, they bring us to their community members that they serve to connect with them and inform them about the circular bioeconomy, as well as invite us to their events. And Beam's success is really built on strong partnerships, and I believe that we've seen a very significant growth in those partnerships in the last year. We've also found that Beam can play a bigger role when it comes to exposing our students to STEM, just STEM learning in general. So in addition.
Do you mind defining STEM just for anyone?
Oh, STEM is what? Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. So in addition to participating in just like youth-focused community events, we also go and give presentations in classrooms where the students take part in circular bioeconomy activities, related activities. We're also launching a youth ambassador program. This is a pilot program, and we're starting in San Joaquin County, but we plan to do a youth ambassador program in every county, including Stanislaus, of course. So this is an eight-week paid program for high school students, and will get them a deeper understanding of what the circular bioeconomy is, as well as careers in the circular bioeconomy. So we'll do this through hands-on workshops, guest speakers, site visits, and then they'll have a final project where they will go and then teach younger students what they learned, as well as do STEM activities with them, hands-on STEM activities. So our San Joaquin County Youth Ambassador Program launches this Thursday, so very exciting. And another method we use to expose our students to STEM content is field trips. So this can also be an example of a much deeper, or how partnerships have a much larger impact in the work that we do. We partnered with Invest In Me, which is a local nonprofit here. Oh, thank you. Which is a local nonprofit here in Stanislaus County to take 30 students to Stanford. This was in July, just a few weeks ago. And this was a full, full day of learning. They toured the Stanford Sustainability Farm and visited research labs working on projects like turning mycelium or like mushrooms into sustainable packaging materials and bioengineering plants and microbes to solve environmental challenges. They also got to speak to first-generation college students and learn from their experiences, which honestly, I think was one of the most inspiring and more relatable parts of the field trip. So these are, these field trips are really cool opportunities for our students to get direct STEM contact and talk to researchers and visit labs that are generally not open to the public at all. And so I'm very proud that Beam has the ability to do this and offer these opportunities to our students, our local students. All right, and with that, I'll pass it over to my colleague Nancy Martinez. Thank you all.
There we go, down here. Good morning, everybody. My name is Nancy Martinez. I'm the Community Prosperity Lead at Beam Circular, and I'm here to tell you a little bit about a community steering committee that we have. So we have a community steering committee that is an advising, guiding body of us. And we opened applications late 2024, and we received 50 applications. And from that 50 applications, we also were able to have a review panel from different independent members from our community, from each of the counties that we serve. And they helped us identify 17 amazing members and leaders of these communities that would help us guide our community work. So the Community Steering Committee is focused on advising our strategies on deploying resources that will meet the need of our communities. They're also helping planning, designing, and hosting different community engagement sessions, like the ones that Bree already mentioned. And they're also supporting the design of our community benefit programs. So connected to the community benefit programs, our year, this year, has been focused on creating some guiding frameworks that we will use to communicate our values and the work that we do. And so you'll see on the right side of your screen, the Good Jobs Framework. So with the Community Steering Committee, they really helped create this resource. And it includes eight pillars of what, when we say good jobs, that we want to create good jobs, this is what we mean. This includes family sustaining wages, employment benefits, the right to unionize and organize, opportunities for professional growth, stable and predictable schedules, safe and healthy work conditions, supportive work environments, and I think a very important one, creating a sense of purpose. So as you continue to hear the word good jobs, the Community Steering Committee has really helped us identify what is it that we should mean when we say good jobs. Right now, you can access the full framework on our website if you'd like to learn more about it. And we're also in the process of creating a one-to-two page, pager that is community-friendly and translating both of those resources into Spanish. Connected also to our community benefit programs, we're also developing an environmental framework that will help us communicate what are our environmental standards? How are we going to make decisions on what technology, what sort of projects we want to support? And then they're also helping us create some pilot projects. Bree already talked about one of those pilot projects, the Youth Ambassadors Program. And we also launched a Community Ambassadors Program here in Stanislaus, and that also launched this week. We had our first meeting yesterday where we had 18 women from across the county, a lot of them actually from the Patterson area, that are very excited about learning more about the circular bioeconomy and being in-depth experts of what we say to the community about the work that we do. And they're getting trained to be able to spread that message to their own communities, go to those resource fairs, represent Beam, create those spaces for community conversations about the work that we do. And so this Community Steering Committee has been just phenomenal in allowing us to do a lot of work, connect to different parts of our community across the three counties, but especially here in Stanislaus. And it is my absolute pleasure to invite, re-invite Perfecto Muñoz, who is one of our members of our steering committee. And he can tell us more about his experience, not just being part of this committee, but also in just the work that he's been a part of.
All right. I was asked to give you an overview of what the community was concerned with or unaware of the great work that is currently being done. I think one of the, one of the stunning points for me was when Beam Circular started its process, there was very little information going to the community and that they needed to, and the community were asking a variety of questions as relates to the outcomes, what are the possibilities, what are the job opportunities, who gets these jobs? And part of that was me and a group of us started getting the community together to try to answer those questions. But we didn't think we had the skills. And so we started reaching out to the staff, saying, could you come in and talk to the community? And when I say community, I'm talking about people in a community. When we had meetings at the King Kennedy Center, the people that showed up were from, not only from West Modesto, South Modesto, they came as far as Empire, Crow's Landing, Patterson, Wesley, Grayson, because they were all interested in knowing what's going on and how does that impact my community? And one of the important thing was, is how do we get that message out to the community about what Beam Circular is all about? And through that conversation, we invited a couple of staff members who came in, Gloria Marr and a staff member from UC Merced that started the conversation. Diaz is his last name, correct? And he was a professor there, and he was part of this concept of what they were going to try to do. And that was a good thing because they heard from someone like them who'd been able, who was able to not only speak in Spanish to the group, because most of them were Spanish speakers, and what was going on. The other thing was the opportunity to go to UC Merced for that summit. And that was another thing where we actually had a bus of what, 40, 50 people from the community, from all over the community that came in. And also, we had representatives from, community members from Riverbank, Oakdale, and other locations, Turlock, that wanted to go along in this bus to go and learn about what was taking place at UC Merced. And they had it, on the way back, all they did was talk about what they learned, what they didn't know and what they didn't understand. And that was a good, that was a valuable thing. And then the last thing that we did was we asked Cameron Warner to come to the, to the, to the center and also speak to the community with her, with her passion about what this all means and how this will impact the community for the economic development. We're talking about prosperity. How do we increase wealth in our community, especially in the underserved community? What does that really mean to them? And Karen came in, and she did speak in relationship to that. And she did a very good job because after, after her presentation, we had another meeting with the community, and the community said, oh wow, this is, who is this person? So had wealth of knowledge and a lot of information. And I think that was another key element that began to make the community aware of what are the, what are the really opportunities here? Instead of fighting it, let's see how we can join it and make it better. Matter not only for what they're achieving, but how does that better the community? And I think that those are the kinds of things that we are trying to do in the community. And through the great work of what Karen has done and in the creation of that advisory committee, I'm a member of it, of that committee, and we talk about a lot of different things. But I think the most important thing is, is community, once community is aware of what's taking place, then they have a better position about, do I support it or not? I mean, we're still going to have our critics, they're out there. But at the same time, how do we invest these resources to better achieve some of the objectives that we want to have in our community, especially in the area of underserved communities? Because that's what it's all about. I always thought 2030 was the idea to uplift the community. And I think those core principles are still there, the values are still there. And we're seeing that results through the childcare, we're seeing that through the migrant center. We're seeing a variety of things that are taking place, but what happens next? What happens after that? What are the kinds of economic investments are we going to do with this Beam Circular perspective? Are we going to, how do we, the community is saying, how does that economic investment benefit me? And I think we have, we still have a long ways to go, but we're getting there. Karen has done a very good job of doing that. And I'm very proud to know her and, because I remember, we met many years ago when she was with Artur. But she has a lot of depth and passion about what she does. And I think that Nancy has been a real cohort to the community because when we needed answers, we called Nancy Martinez. And say, Nancy would always show up at our community meetings to try to answer these questions. So those are the things that I think that this Beam Circular has achieved. And I, and I think that the more we do that in the community, the better we are. Because I'm always the, just to give you kind of where my passion is, I come from a very, a family of humanitarians. My mother and dad were both very involved in community in Stockton. And they were to the point where I often wondered why they were having all these people over their houses, in the house, and they were talking about, you know, the needs of the community. And I think that's where my interest about community became more passionate for me, even though I went to school and went out of state and was gone for a while, then came back and then worked for the University of California School of Public Health, writing health educational policy, plans on how do we make healthcare better in the state of California from the university's perspective. But then I started wondering, how can I get invested in the community? And this is where I landed. And I landed here with the idea that maybe I can make a change, maybe I can make a difference and network with those of you in the community here, those of you up on the table, I mean, the, I guess the chairs or behind the desks that you sit behind. You all have to make a conscious decision about what do you do for the community and how you invest in your community. Because West Modesto is no different than Turlock. Community, underserved community is no different, and any Oakdale, no different. They're all looking for, what can we do to help ourselves? And you'll find that once you get community together, they're willing to be a partner. They want to be a partner in what, what happens in this county and what happens in their community. And by being a partner, that means that they feel that they now are invested. And now they can say, well, I own Beam Circular in a sense, because they say, I was part of it. I'm seeing the development of it. And I think that's what we're trying to do with what Karen is doing. It's been, it's been an interesting road, and as you know, because of the challenges. But I believe that there's, there's nothing to prevent this from being a great opportunity for this community. Thank you.
I just want to thank Perfecto so much for his partnership. And our entire Community Steering Committee has really been so dedicated to helping to realize the goal of this work, to be truly community-centered and to do industry development in a way that's different and that results in community wealth building that is long-term and sustainable and results in a stronger and more resilient, you know, neighborhood level well-being here in Stanislaus County. So thank you so much for your service and leadership, as well as your guidance in this work. The last portion of our presentation is just a few highlights from our workforce development work. And, you know, what I would highlight is, and hope that you take away from the community piece, and connect, connecting the community piece with workforce development and businesses, that we really believe in. and businesses, that we really believe in activating Stanislaus County as a global leader at these intersections of science, agriculture, and manufacturing. We really believe that agriculture and manufacturing is about science and technology. I mean, those of you who farm know this, the way that we are going to be resilient and continue to grow our economy into the future, both in our legacy industries and in attracting these new industries, is if we are really allowing and enabling our young people and our workers to engage in these new industries of the future. And so we get really excited about hands-on learning experiences with community, with students, with workers. And that's been a big theme of our workforce development activities to date. Over the past year, we deployed over $350,000 in grant funding from non-county sources for a variety of pilot programs across the three counties. That included projects in Stanislaus County in partnership with Modesto Junior College, the Mesa Program at MJC, Enoch's High School, and CSU Stanislaus. And then we also have been deploying projects across Merced and San Joaquin Counties as well that expose, that support early career exposure in the bioeconomy, as well as hands-on learning and job experience in roles such as lab technicians. You don't need an advanced degree to become a lab technician. You do need some training and some hands-on experience. It's a great example of a job that's in demand in the food industry, as well as in the growing bioeconomy. We're now excited to be entering deployment of the Stanislaus County ARPA funding for workforce development in the bioeconomy. So as part of the allocation of ARPA funding to the BEAM initiative, there is a total of $2.3 million available for local workforce development projects that support job training and career pathway development in the bioeconomy. We opened up applications for two grant programs with this funding in June, so just a couple months ago, and had an initial round of applications. We have two more rounds coming up this fall. So this is just the start of this program. But this includes funding in one bucket with $800,000 available for the development of new programs, smaller equipment purchases and one-time cost, curriculum development, and faculty professional development to support the deployment of new training programs in this space. And then a second bucket totaling $1.5 million available for larger investments in significant facilities upgrades and major equipment or facilities investments that will really have catalytic and long-term impact in our ability to support job access in this space. And I'm really pleased today to get to announce the first three awards that we are making as part of this grant program. We received fourteen applications as part of that first round. It was a very competitive round. We really worked closely with a panel of reviewers to prioritize these projects. And we're currently working with a number of applicants to refine and resubmit proposals in upcoming rounds. But we were really excited to make an initial three awards. The first is for Modesto Junior College's Mesa Program, for them to run a circular bioeconomy research internship program. We were really pleased to support a pilot version of this program last year. It was a fantastic success. This program gives first-generation low-income STEM students at Modesto Junior College a paid internship experience where they get to do a deep dive on a bioeconomy topic. They get to learn about this field, but also get really practical experience that supports them with their resume. They get faculty mentorship, which also allows for faculty professional development and exposure to the bioeconomy, which then has ripple effects in classrooms at Modesto Junior College. So we're excited to support the next phase of that project and continue to support those paid learning experiences for STEM students at MJC. And then the next two investments are significant ones and some really major equipment and facility investments. The first is at CSU Stanislaus for the development of the Center for Sustainable Biotechnology. This is a $435,000 investment that will impact over 4,000 individuals over the next five years. This is really establishing a state-of-the-art research and development and training lab at Stan State that will be an incredible resource, not only for Stan State and really advancing its leadership in biotechnology and career pathways in biotechnology here available in our community, but also that laboratory is going to be made available to local schools and communities and workforce training programs, which will really allow it to have broader impact across the community. We're very excited about the way that this investment will be able to support a number of different programs year-round that give people access to really hands-on, hands-on learning experience in the biosciences. And then the second grant finally to the, in the facility space that we awarded in this round was to Volt Institute for a new program that they are calling their Bioeconomy Smart Technologies Education Pathways, or BioStep Program. This investment really, which is just over, just under $500,000, will allow Volt to really expand their, their programs which offer stackable micro-credentials for manufacturing industries, including bio-manufacturing, as well as food manufacturing and other in-demand professions here in the local, local community. In particular, this supports training in automation, controls, instrumentation, and industrial systems for really accessible pathways and upskilling opportunities for workers in fields that are really in demand right now, and offer some of those higher-wage opportunities in our legacy manufacturing industries, as well as growing incoming manufacturing industries. We're very excited about these new partnerships. And that investment is going to serve over 4,200 individuals over the next five years with really specific credentialing and access to training. So these are significant investments. We're so excited about the opportunities that these are going to open up in our community. And we are still receiving proposals. The next proposal round is, deadline is August 30th. We have another deadline that then follows in September. All of the information on these grant programs are available on our website. And then finally, we were going to close with one more guest speaker, Dr. Alec Aaron, who's the project lead for that lab that I mentioned at CSU Stanislaus. He's been pulled away because of an urgent family issue, but he's been texting me in real time. And he did send a message that he was hoping I could read on his behalf. So in place of our final speaker, forgive me, I'm not a full replacement for Dr. Aaron. But I will say that Dr. Aaron is a great example of local talent here in our community who is so passionate about training the next generation of science leaders and bioeconomy leaders. And we've been really pleased to support Dr. Aaron with professional development through some of our state funding. And now he will be leading this significant project at Stan State. So I'm going to read this message that he shared, and then we'll close our presentation. "Since moving to California and joining Stan State as a faculty member, I have had the privilege of collaborating closely with BEAM Circular in Modesto over the past year. BEAM's openness to work with Stan State and other local institutions created a natural pathway for me to connect with them. And together, we have achieved significant progress, both professionally and personally. On a personal level, I have gained a deep appreciation for the impactful work that BEAM is leading in agricultural byproducts management, where they are transforming unused biomass into a wide range of valuable materials. Their commitment to building a circular bioeconomy is embedded in their vision, and it is evident that their efforts will leave a lasting mark on Stanislaus County. Professionally, BEAM supported my participation in a six-week professional development program at Lawrence Berkeley National Laboratory, which not only expanded my research collaborations, but also positioned me to bring meaningful opportunities to Stan State's students and faculty. The training I received is directly shaping a new STEM workshop for K-12 students in Stanislaus County, equipping them with biotechnology skills that will strengthen the regional biotech workforce. Most recently, I was awarded a $435,000 grant from BEAM Circular, that's the Stanislaus County ARPA funding, to establish a center of sustainable biotechnology, the first of its kind in Stanislaus County. This center will serve as a hub for workforce development, providing students and community members with cutting-edge training that will prepare them to contribute to the local economy and beyond. I am truly grateful to BEAM Circular for the incredible work they are doing and the unique role they play in advancing workforce development and community growth in Stanislaus County. My experience working with them over the past year has been nothing short of fantastic, and I deeply value the spirit of collaboration they bring to every interaction. I look forward with great enthusiasm to strengthening our partnership in the years ahead as we continue to work together for the benefit of our students, community members, and the broader regional economy." So apologies for not having Dr. Aaron here in person, but I'm grateful that he passed on that message. And with that, I know we went long, but so appreciate the chance to share some stories and updates from our past year. It's been a full and vibrant run. I feel more excited than ever about the leadership of this community and the opportunities we have for really long-term lasting impact through this work. It will take time to build up a big, growing, new industry. We also feel like we're starting to see those early wins come in, and we're looking forward to both immediate and longer-term impact through this work. So we have our contact information there, and I will end, and happy to take any questions.
All right. Wow. That was a good report. Any questions for Karen or Amanda or the team?
I just have a comment. I, I always feel the passion from your whole team, and you keep building a better, better team every time you come in. I see you're pilfering other folks from other organizations, the best, the best. Anyways, the, the way people talk is different. Sometimes people come up and just report out. It seems different from your team, just generally, the, the passion is there, which in the end is, is what we need more of in our community. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And thank you, Karen. Wonderful job to your team. You guys did outstanding and thoroughly highlighting all the, all the stuff that you guys are working on. It's very exciting, and we are anticipating all this as it comes to fruition. I did want to go back to the partnership with Opportunity Stanislaus and working on the site selection. I know that you guys are still in process in that, but wanted just to follow up and see where you guys were at specifically. And is there a timeline on when we can expect those sites to kind of rise to the top?
Yeah, great question. The, you know, the simple answer is that I, we should have updates in the next three months that we should be able to share more broadly, because we're in the midst of conversations with our real estate partners and specific sites. It's at that phase where some of those conversations may take different lengths of time. But I expected we should be able to come back to the board with updates in the next three months.
Okay. We look forward to that.
Manny?
Yes, as always, thank you so much. The enthusiasm, all the things, and then the return on investment is obviously very impressive. And I don't think it can be understated or overstated that in a tough fiscal year for the state, that you were able to extrapolate funds for this region. I think that speaks a lot for all of us and to the community, the amount of money that's been invested. So it's not a vision that we're just seeing here locally, but even the state and the governor's office and all legislature recognize how important this is. So job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Great, great presentation. Thank you to everybody. I got Erica, Amanda, Karen Yoli, Miguel Dulce, Jorge, Edgar, Bree, Nancy, Prefecto. I think I got everybody.
Dr. Allo.
I know.
Apologies.
So thank you, guys, all. Great presentation. So just a couple of quick things. You know, when I look at these things, when we, when we invested this money to begin with, decided to do this, you know, basically, we had all these different categories, and we've gone through a bunch of them here today, of where we headed. Some of them are easy, that we can find results for, right? We can easily see the results, the stuff we talked about during COVID, how we helped people during that period with that kind of work, the infrastructure county box, that's easy to point to, and, you know, just easy things we can point to and say, look at, look what's happening there. The nurture, what you guys have done with childcare, just, I mean, that's just amazing. I mean, I was skeptical of that. I was skeptical of a lot of this, to tell you the truth, when it started. And, and, but that one, shoot, we got eighty-three of those up and running. And it's just how crucial that is to this whole big picture that we're looking at, right? And we can get all the jobs in Orioles, but if we've got babies at home that have nowhere to stay, I mean, I know in my own office, we've actually let, I've said this before, we've let CPAs bring the babies into the office, just to try to help get them to, get them to work. And so, so that's great that you guys do that. Other parts of this, though, the jury's still out. It's hard to, it's hard to quantify it, right? We're still waiting to see what's going on. Helping businesses, permit process, you know, that's a never-ending thing, one-stop shop. We've been talking about that as long as I've been here, trying to figure out a way to make that a better process, you know? And it just seems to never get there. But so I'm, I'm hopeful that that'll happen. We talked a little bit about in our briefing, the CDFIs. Still discourages what's going on with the CDFIs. I think a lot of money has been invested, I mean, to get these organizations, three of them now, right, that are CDFIs. I don't see the funds being deployed out into the community at this point. And I know we talked about this, and maybe I'm wrong, and maybe that's coming. But, yeah, I know, just for a fact, I know money with Valley First Credit Union that we put in there. We, when I'm talking about Oak Valley Community Bank has put money into there to invest. And I just don't see it out, you know, first-time homebuyers, you know, new businesses. I just, I just want that money to be deployed. Sorry, I know we talked about this and things, and I think you guys told me I was wrong, but I'm still going to say this. I hope I'm wrong. And I hope that money's starting to happen. It's starting, it's a process. Like you said, all these things don't happen overnight. That's great. Talent development, good stuff. I see the stuff that you're, you know, doing with MJC and Stanislaus State, that's great to try to get them to start to see, again, part of this big picture. Here's where we think this direction this is going. This is where you guys need to be training people. That's great that Stanislaus State got the, got that funding. But it's discouraging that they're not, that we have to fund them to do that, that they're not already trying to fund that and trying to do that themselves. They don't have these labs and stuff in place to start to think, what are areas that we need to train our students in more than, you know, for this growing potential economy? And again, we're just starting this, so maybe they're not even aware of it. But I hate for it to have to be county money to get to Stanislaus State. And I know things are tight there and stuff right now, but it's tight for us, too. So anyway, so again, we'll see. I'm glad it's happening. I just wish that they could have done that on their own and us not having to fund them. So BEAM Circular, last one I wanted to get into. Another one that I was skeptical on, you know, when I got into, got into this gig of being a county supervisor, something I regret, the whole my life, my whole life I probably will. So, but when I got into this, one of the things was, over year after year, I would see our, our economy here in Stanislaus County ride the waves up and down just with the housing industry. That's all it was. It was like, housing industry good, okay, the economy is good. Housing industry crashes, it drops, you know, we, everything crashes and burns, and we go through these recessions. And so I always wondered, why couldn't we exploit our agriculture industry? We're always looking for these other industries. We're always chasing these other industries to come here. And so this was just, for me, this was, this was great. When, when we went through all this process with the Brookings Institute, and they came back and said, you've got this gem here, this agricultural industry, why aren't you exploiting that? Why aren't you? And so that's what BEAM's doing. And it's coming back and coming up with all these different potential products. When I first saw, thought of, there was back in, back in 2009, remember Celendra? The government invested like $500 million in this solar panel company, and it just cracked, within two years it was bankrupt. And my first thought was, okay, here we are, we're going to invest all this money in supposedly this industry. But you've proven me wrong. This is, this is, this is working. I mean, you guys are finding things. A perfect example was Edgar, I think Edgar probably had to go back to work. What he's put together with the, with the byproducts and the feedstock and everything. So there's so much hope here with what you guys are doing. And I know it's a long process. It's going to take, just like you said at the end here, Karen, that this is not going to happen overnight. But I think the results you're starting to get already are very positive and very encouraging to see this happening. So, and I really think that this really could bring this industry to this, to this community and lead the state in this stuff. Again, not a Celendra type of investment. This is something that I think is going to, is going to prove out and come to fruition. And, and I think for generations to come, we'll have some great results here. So keep doing what you're doing. I know it, it doesn't happen fast, and we need to be patient, too, for that all to come to fruition. But I thank you guys for all your hard work. And hopefully it just keeps going and keep giving us updates, good updates, even bad updates. I know there was some federal money that we lost out on that just recently. And, but you got that state money, like Manny said, in this environment. And so it just shows that this, this does have promise. And so thank you, guys, for all you're doing. And let's hope it keeps going.
All right. Thank you, Terry. Just one question. First, great presentation by all. Terry hit all the names. I made sure I followed along with him, and he got, I think he got all the names. Going back to the 2030 update on the local first contracts, I should have asked this during that little short break, but just, what do you think the biggest hurdle is there? Is that going to be policy change at the local level, or is that going to be legislative change or advocating for legislative change at the state level, the way contracts have to at the state level in the way contracts have to go? Do you see, what biggest hurdle are you looking at? Because it's so important to keep that local money here, right? Because it tumbles. It tumbles throughout the community. So just kind of thinking, what's going to be the biggest hurdle for?
I mean, yeah, you see the repairs on scenic. It says Bay Area right there. Doesn't say Stanislas County. It's, like you mentioned, there's a lot of different hurdles to kind of tackle. Yes, policy change is going to try and be a part of that. I know sometimes it has to go to the lowest bidder. From the interviews we're conducting, we're also seeing that a lot of collaboratives between the cities helps out a lot, so maybe that's another possibility. I think that for any chemical that they buy, it's like a Bay Area partnership with almost any city in the state to buy chemicals together. So that way, it's not one city purchasing, getting a one-city price. The larger the quantity they buy, the lower in price it gets. But we were speaking to the San Diego Sister Center that also started a similar program in their area. And I think even like a certification with the county would help a lot. A way to get preference in writing rather than just, you know, there's a local preference. And we do see the cities helping, right? They don't have, they have a percentage, but it may vary from city to city. And they try their best to help. But it'd be great to get something in writing where it's like, hey, if you are local and you meet our requirements, we see you're a good faith business, not a Solyndra. Why not? Give you some preference when you bid on contracts here locally. And so it'll be a collaborative effort. We're also thinking about creating some type of database. You know, any business that works with us, if we hear of a contract, we'd be more than happy to share. But yeah, a lot of things coming down the pipeline, and thank you for answering or asking the question.
You know, I saw, one of the things they talked about here, just Beam was talking about, is the project labor agreement, which is something I've been supporting here for a while, is to try to make sure that we, and I think you guys signed a letter of intent with Valley Builders, to try to make sure that the workforce side of things actually stays here locally when these things happen. So just a little plug for project labor agreement.
More money we can keep local. That's better for the entire community.
I was going to apologize to the speaker.
Oh, go ahead.
Fire trucks are going by, something's going on.
Thank you. Thank you for the, and that's the only question I had. Beam, way to go. Rate of return is doubled, more than doubled. Thank you for your hard work and the entire team that is doing that. Thank you. All right. Yep. All right. Public comment. Ron, I know you wanted to come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I have to say personally that I was very impressed with the presentation. Sometimes presentations can be quite verbose and a lot of numbers and stuff. But I really see the little pieces moving around and interacting with each other. And that's what I want to talk about today. As a matter of fact, I'm so impressed that I think there's an opportunity for funding in this county. You guys were talking about keeping the money here locally. We should even look at, you know, having such an infrastructure that others outside the county want to bring money here, like bring money from the outside. And I have a bunch of things, rabbit holes, I can go down about that. But the thing that impressed me about, I just feel like I can't imagine too many counties having all the entrepreneurs offering childcare, for instance, you know, being supportive to that level and then integrating with other county agencies and departments and other partners, business partners, to help them, you know, run their business and offer other services. And so I'm almost thinking, I know you're probably overworked as it is, but maybe you can sniff around and see how other counties doing. Other counties might need support, and you might be able to earn some of their income to help them get their programs going. Okay? So yeah, opportunities from the outside. Yeah, you guys did a great job so far. It looks like, you know, every few, you know. Regarding childcare, it's my understanding that most childcare that's needed is for babies and toddlers. But again, integrating with other county things. What about storytime for the older kids that do understand enough English? And what about help with homework and English for parents who want their kids to learn English? I know I've heard presentations here before about that, so I know that's available somewhere. I don't know the structure. It's very complex. But please, I know it may be, and so these businesses, if they want to, I don't know how you'd work out the financing, but you know, they could advertise, hey, we have storytime in our thing, and you know, they wouldn't have to try to fire some whatever separate person, so they could build up their business to have additional services. That's a selling point. Okay, so that is that part. Okay, procurement. That's a rabbit hole I went down recently. And Supervisor Withrow's office did get a copy of a lead that I got. I don't know if he personally looked at that. But there is a little bit of a movement going on right now about procurement. What is happening is because those that are selling services have an advantage. They've been with the company a long time. They know the little ways to manipulate numbers to make it look like they're giving you a good deal, but it doesn't pan out during the, you know, during the year or whatever. And there's overruns or hidden costs that they, you know, they don't do that. And there's a movement now. There's now services for procurement officers within companies. And I assume that would help with governments and any partners with the government, that they could get some advantage and make sure, you know, they know the little pitfalls when dealing with procurement. So I just want to put that out there. In fact, there's a whole podcast on procurement that I've been listening to lately. Okay. And I'm here as a middleman for anything. I go down all kinds of rabbit holes. Yeah, so, I mean, you guys have done a lot, but, okay. So with, oh, and also the incentives for procurement officers are geared wrong so that they're motivated to do things that may not actually be appropriate kind of service, that doesn't fit the organization doing, you know, procuring. And of course, the deception and costs. Okay, manufacturing, yes, it looks like it's awesome that you want to work with smaller companies. What is happening, also another rabbit hole, is there's a lot of serious scientists that are disillusioned with mainstream science and are therefore trying desperately to get research done to show that they have alternatives to big pharma, big ag, as far as all kinds of things, with health and nutrition and many things. And this is the perfect place to have it. And if you find out these people who are doing this, when they're ready to manufacture, is to know, hey, we're here, and then, you know, I don't know what kind of good deals you have for, but these are people that would not, you know, these are people that could use some support getting through the USDA system, the FDA system, because of resistance from these big mega corporations. Okay, so I'm just letting you know, these are out there, and these are all through podcasts I listen to, which I listen to about 45 right now. And then the pesticides. Oh, I love that we have an alternative to paraquat and glyphosate. So I look forward to that. I think something that Supervisor Withrow almost asked, but I'm not sure, is that this pesticide that was, come up is that, it sounds like it's proprietary, like it hasn't, it's not fully through the system or isn't an established pesticide. That's just my outstanding question. That, he just wants to produce a different way. I don't know. But I don't care really about the answer to that. I'm just, I'm kind of curious. Sounds like maybe it's not all the way through. Okay, that's all I have. Oh, look at that, you timed me. Thank you.
Great job on timing, Ron. All right. Any other public comment? Bring it back to the board for motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to accept the update.
First and the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous. Great job, you guys. All right. Moving on, correspondence. We're going to acknowledge the receipt of the correspondence and refers recommended on the agenda, Board Supervisor Reports.
Just have a quick report. We are hosting a town hall meeting tonight that will be in partnership with Sierra Vista. It will be in South Modesto at the Sierra Vista South Modesto Wellness Center. Six, or I'm sorry, 906 Imperial Avenue, and it'll be from 5:30 to 7:00 p.m. So we hope to have a great turnout this evening. I do want to thank Ruben Imperial of Behavioral Health, as well as Dave Lehman and Danny, who will be there from Public Works. And we will have a representative from the Sheriff's Department as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Chance. Any others? Okay, moving on, Legislative Fiscal and Management Report.
So just a quick recognition that our state legislators did return from recess last week. And I think what got most of the attention were these conversations on mid-cycle redistricting in the state of California. I do want you to know that we are confident that our Elections Department would be fully funded for any election should that occur. So that was important to us, and there was a lot of advocacy on behalf of counties to ensure full funding for that process. Also want to recognize that Congress is scheduled to reconvene on September 2nd after the August recess, and that there would need to be a continuing resolution anticipated in September to bridge the gap and avoid any potential shutdowns in government as of October 1st. So there'll be more federal budget negotiations that may have implications at the local level. We'll keep you informed. And lastly, we are working on an opposition letter to AB 690, which deals with contracting for inagit defense services. This does not have an immediate or direct impact on the Stanislas County. However, in the past, we have contracted for those services in different ways. And we want to ensure that any legislation in the future would not limit our potential to ensure that we deliver the best product for our local taxpayers and that the state fully funds any mandates that they have. So that's what that bill is about, and happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for the CEO? All right. We're going to adjourn. Deputy Middleton, thank you for your overview watch, and we do have closed session.
Yes, we have closed session this morning. The first is conference with legal counsel with significant exposure to litigation. We're subject to Government Code Section 549, 56.9, subdivision 2 or 3. We have one matter to discuss. The Brown Act requires me that when we have a threat of litigation, to disclose the facts and circumstances of that threat. The facts and circumstances are contained in a letter dated August 15th, 2025, from the Law Office of Ross and Schwartz on behalf of their client, the Salida Fire Protection District, to myself informing that the Salida Community Fire District has authorized litigation against the county to force the county to apply a condition on ministerial permits, such as building permits, that would require property owners to join the fire district's community financing district and pay a development fee based on the proposed new development or be denied the otherwise ministerial permit. The fire district's August 15th letter is available from the clerk of the board. The second item is a conference with labor negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 57.6. The agency negotiators and the labor organizations are stated in the agenda. Then the board will sit as the in-home supportive services public authority. They all have closed session, conference with labor negotiator. We're subject to Government Code Section 549, 57.6 as well. The agency negotiators are Jody Hayes, Ryan Luke, and Jonah Navarro. The labor organization is, of course, the in-home supportive services, UDWA. With that, appropriate public comment?
Any public comment? All right. We'll adjourn into closed session.